Good morning and welcome to the Board of Commissioners meeting. Our zoning hearing for August 18th, 2015. Our custom is to have an invocation followed by the pledge. Is Dr. Crenshaw here today? Is she? George Crenshaw? Okay. In that event, what we're gonna do, Tim Pierce, appreciate you being our GIS specialist for ComDeb. If you would lead us in prayer, that would be followed by the invocation, that would be followed by the pledge. Officer Mawry, is the officer here?
Right.
There you go. Thank you. Those wish to please rise.
Reading from Proverbs 2, starting with verse 6. For the Lord grants wisdom; from his mouth come knowledge and understanding. He grants a treasure of common sense to the honest. He is a shield to those who walk in integrity. He guards the path of the just and protects those who are faithful to him. Then you will understand what is right, just, and fair, and you will find the right way to go. For wisdom will enter your heart, and knowledge will fill you with joy. Wise choices will watch over you. Our heavenly Father, we come to you today and we just pray for your wisdom. We pray for wise choices. We pray for your hand upon everyone that is here, Lord. We pray this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Let the agents testify of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We will, thank you, thank you, Tim and Officer Mawry. We'll now call this meeting officially to order. John?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Today's hearing will be conducted with the following process and procedure. Each case will be called in numerical order. When each case is called, the applicant is requested to stand to signify that they are in attendance. Then we're gonna call for any opposition to signify that they are here also, so that they may be counted for the official record. After the counting of the opposition, the applicant and any opposition will be asked to come forward to be sworn in, so they can present testimony to the Board of Commissioners from the front podium. The applicant will testify first, and then the opposition, if any, will testify second. Each side gets 10 minutes to state their case or concerns. There's not a rebuttal process, so convey all your information to the Board of Commissioners within your 10-minute time period. Additionally, if more than one person wishes to speak on an issue, you might wanna coordinate with each other about what you're gonna talk about, because each side only gets 10 minutes, and you don't wanna cover the same information twice. Then, after both sides have had their 10-minute presentation period, the Board will start to discuss the matter at hand. From the discussion, they may ask one or more speakers to come back to the front for additional questions or comments. After that, the Board will make a decision to either approve, deny, hold, or continue the matter at hand. Mr. Chairman and Board, there are two cases on today's agenda which have been withdrawn and will not be heard today. First case is rezoning case Z-67, Black Builders LLC. That case was withdrawn without prejudice, will not be heard today. Additionally, LUP 23, Legacy Christian School, Inc. That case was withdrawn without prejudice and will not be heard today. There are a number of cases on today's printed agenda which have been continued by the Stafford Planning Commission and will not be heard today. Rezoning case Z-86 of 2014, 01 LLC. That case was held by the Planning Commission and will not be heard until the September zoning hearings. Rezoning case Z-59, R-Frame LLC. That case was continued by staff, will not be heard until the September zoning hearings. Rezoning case Z-66, 825 Morris Hill LLC. That case was continued, was held by the Planning Commission and will not be heard until these September zoning hearings. Greenhouse Properties of Atlanta. That case was continued by the Planning Commission and will not be heard until the September zoning hearings. And rezoning case Z-77, Seven Springs Development Company, Inc. That case was continued by the staff and will not be heard today. Additionally, there's one other business item on today's agenda which was continued by the staff, Mr. Chairman and Board. Other business item number 36 will be held, will be heard in the September cycle. There's still more work that needs to be held, so other business 36 was continued by the staff. Mr. Chairman and Board, here is one request to continue another case that's not on the printed agenda. The applicant for rezoning case Z-44, 621 Property Investments LLC, has requested a continuous, Mr. Chairman. They need to continue to work on their site plan, and Mr. Huff is here to address the Board.
Mr. Chairman and Board, we have requested this case be continued, and the opposition has been informed and actually was part of the discussions on continuing the case. They didn't wanna be inconvenienced to be here, so they were told that we would ask it be continued.
Okay. Not that I don't trust you, but is there anyone here from Z-44? Are you, any concerns with continuing?
I'm the only one here, I guess everybody's got to continue.
Okay. I'll take that as an okay, then. Commissioner Weatherford?
I have no problem with being continued, sir.
I need a motion today.
Motion to continue Z-44, sir.
Motion is second by Ott. Call a question. Motion carries 5-0. It's Commissioner Oott, I'm sorry, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I would like to ask the people in today's audience, please put your cellphones on silent. The ringing on the cellphones, do interfere to broadcast the presentations. So if you have a cellphone, please put it on silent mode. And with that, Mr. Chairman, I'm ready to start the consent agenda.
Please do.
Thank you. Cobb County Board of Commissioners zoning hearing consent agenda for August 18th, 2015. Rezoning case Z-54, Willie A. Polston, Jr., request rezoning from PSC to, from PSC and R-20 to CRC for the purpose of an automotive paint and body shop in Land Lot 34 of the 18th District. The property is located on the east side of Powell Drive, south of Veterans Memorial Highway. The Planning Commission recommends deletion of Z-54 to the NRC zoning district, subject to the following conditions. Site plan received by the zoning division on April 2nd, 2015, with the district commissioner approving minor modifications. Letter of agreeable conditions from Mr. Parks Huff dated August 4th, 2015, with the following changes. To item number 7, add to the end evergreen shrubbery to be used for landscaping. And item number 10, revised to read, the NRC zoning shall be limited to light auto repair. Parking lot to be striped and paved to county standards. District commissioner to approve the paint colors on the exterior of the building. Fire department comments and recommendations. Water and sewer division comments and recommendations. Stormwater management division comments and recommendations. And Cobb DOT comments and recommendations. The applicant's representative is present. Is there anyone here opposed to rezoning case Z-54?
Mr. Cupid.
Yes, thank you. I just want to note that the applicant and the applicant's representative were quite diligent in meeting with the community on this case, and I want to vocalize my appreciation for you publicly for all the effort that you took for us to move this zoning forward. Thank you.
Next item.
Thank you. Let the record show there's no one opposed. Rezoning case Z-70, KW LLC, request rezoning from GC to LI for the purpose of an automotive repair shop in Land Lot 295 of the 17th District. The property is located on the west side of Atlanta Road, south of Ostel Road. The Planning Commission recommends approval to the LI zoning district, subject to the following conditions. Revised site plan received by the zoning division on June 25th, 2015, with the district commissioner approving minor modifications. Letters of agreeable stipulations from Mr. Garvis L. Samms, Jr., dated June 25th, 2015, and July 31st, 2015. Spill pollution prevention plan and protocol to be approved by Stormwater Management Division. Fire department comments and recommendations. Water and sewer division comments and recommendations. Stormwater management division comments and recommendations. And Cobb DOT comments and recommendations. Let the record show the applicant's representative is present. Is there anyone here opposed to rezoning case Z-70? Let the record show there's no one opposed. Rezoning case-
Excuse me.
Yes, ma'am.
Attorney Sam, if you can approach, please.
Good morning, Commissioner.
Thank you, good morning. And I would also like to thank you for working with me in addressing this particular application. I have a letter of stipulations that was provided yesterday, August 17th. I would like to add that to this particular zoning.
Yes, ma'am, that's fine. I've actually got a copy for the clerk right here.
Okay. Very good. And also, you and I had an opportunity to speak about a couple of different things with respect to the asphalt and the actual paint that's on the building. I wanted to add a couple of stipulations with respect to that.
Yes, ma'am.
That letter's dated when?
Yesterday, Mr. Commissioner.
August 17th.
Okay. Am I the only one that doesn't have it?
No, I didn't copy anybody, but the Commissioner was late last night when she got it, so.
Okay. Don't do that in the future.
I'll do it.
We're a team, it takes five votes.
Why don't I just give you a call?
I appreciate it.
Would you like for me to read it?
I'd like to know what's different on that versus what we have in front of us.
Sure. Okay. So this letter addresses a stipulation that our planning commissioner put in there for a landscape strip to be added to the front of the property. And the attorney receiving some feedback from our landscape arborist, it appears that there are some challenges with the area in front of the building which might impede us implementing the stipulation as the planning commissioner provided. So this stipulation just adds some flexibility, and I will read it verbatim here. I'll just read the specific stipulation verbatim. That the planting of a landscape strip along the subject property's frontage, approximately eight feet in width and approximately 30 feet in length, primarily positioned in front of the existing building, will be conditioned upon the submission of a landscape plan, which shall be reviewed by the district commissioner, with the understanding that said landscape strip will vary in width along the subject property's frontage, dependent upon the present positioning of existing underground utilities and existing storm sewer inlets and related infrastructure. Additionally, the landscape plan to be submitted and reviewed by the district commissioner shall reflect a 15-foot landscape strip along the western side of the subject property, which is contiguous to property zone GC, but presently being residentially utilized.
It's on the western side?
It's on the western side or the rear of the property.
Thank you.
Also, wanted to add two stipulations, that all chipped paint is to be removed from the building. The building is to be repainted. And also add that vegetation is to be removed from existing asphalt surface, and the surface is to be repaved.
Yes, ma'am.
You're good with that?
We do.
Thank you. Anything else?
No, appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Samms.
Next item.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Rezoning case Z-74, Paul Idua, Popeal LLC, request rezoning from GC to NRC for the purpose of a medical office in Land Lot 1140 of the 19th District. The property is located on the west side of Ostel Road, south of Warren Drive. The Planning Commission recommends approval to the NRC zoning district, subject to the following conditions. Site plan received by the zoning division on June 4th, 2015, with the district commissioner approving minor modifications. Landscape screening buffer measuring 20 feet in depth to be planted adjacent to the residential neighbor to the north located within the Warren subdivision. Buffer plan to be approved by the county arborist. Any changes to the building architecture facade and/or the color to be approved by the district commissioner. Fire department comments and recommendations. Water and sewer division comments and recommendations. Stormwater management division comments and recommendations. And Cobb DOT comments and recommendations. Is the applicant present? Let the record show the applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed to rezoning case Z-74? Let the record show there's no one opposed.
Next item. Next item, please.
Yes, sir. Rezoning case Z-75, Maricel G. Vargas, request rezoning from PSC and R-15 to R-15 for the purpose of a single-family home in Land Lots 695 and 696 of the 19th District. The property is located on the northwest side of Red Bud Court, northeast of Pear Road. The Planning Commission recommends approval to the R-15 zoning district, subject to the following conditions. Apply for a permit for the carport. Variances approved for the existing buildings only. Any new variances will go to the Board of Zoning Appeals. Development and inspections comments and recommendations. Water and sewer division comments and recommendations. Stormwater management division comments and recommendations. And Cobb DOT comments and recommendations. Is the applicant present? Let the record show the applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed to rezoning case Z-75? Let the record show there's no one opposed. Rezoning case Z-76, Gulf 10 LLC, request rezoning from ONI to NRC for the purpose of a restaurant or drive-thru in Land Lot 7 of the 17th District. The property is located on the southeast side of Powder Springs Street, northeast of Cunningham Road. Planning Commission recommends approval to the NRC zoning district, subject to the following conditions. Site plan received by the zoning division on June 4th, 2015, with the district commissioner approving minor modifications. Letter of agreeable conditions from Mr. John Moore dated August 17th, or August 12th, 2015, excuse me. Water and sewer division comments and recommendations. Stormwater, stormwater management division comments and recommendations. And Cobb DOT comments and recommendations. The applicant's representative is present. Is there anyone here opposed to rezoning case Z-76? Let the record show there's no one opposed. Rezoning case Z-78, Frank Ward, request rezoning from R-80 to R-30 for the purpose of a single-family house in Land Lots 365 and 376 of the 19th District. The property is located on the southwest side of Wright Road, east of Popular Springs Road. The Planning Commission recommends approval to the R-30 zoning district, subject to the following conditions. Site plan received by the zoning division on June 4th, 2015. Allow additional 35,247 square foot lot off private easement from Wright Road. Water and sewer division comments and recommendations. Stormwater management division comments and recommendations. And Cobb DOT comments and recommendations. Is the applicant present? Let the record show the applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed to rezoning case Z-78? Let the record show there's one person opposed, Mr. Chairman, so we'll pull that off and hear that in a regular order.
Thank you.
Rezoning case Z-79, Sanford C. Bennett, request rezoning from GC to LRO for the purpose of professional offices in Land Lots 30 and 31 of the 19th District and Land Lot 328 of the 20th District. The property is located on the northwest corner of Dallas Highway and Mount Calgary Road. The Planning Commission recommends approval to the LRO zoning district, subject to the following conditions. Site plan to be approved by the district commissioner. Applicant or developer to meet all LRO zoning criteria. No outdoor storage or displays. All buildings to be demolished within 90 days of the final Board of Commissioners decision. Water and sewer division comments and recommendations. Stormwater management division comments and recommendations. Cobb DOT comments and recommendations. And the owner developer to enter into a development agreement pursuant to OCGA 3671-13 for dedication of system improvements to mitigate traffic concerns. The applicant is present. Is there anyone here opposed to rezoning case Z-79? Let the record show there's no one opposed.
Thanks, Mr. Weatherford.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would like to add additional comment and stipulation to this consent agenda item that would allow the installation of a septic system if and when approved by the Health Department.
Ma'am clerk, do you have that? Thank you. You're okay with this, sir? I'm assuming you're Mr. Bennett?
Yeah.
Are you, do you understand what Mr. Weatherford is asking you?
I think he said-
Would you please come up here? I'm sorry.
He said, according to the Health Department recommendation, I have talked with the Health Department, and they said if it was not practical for me to hook onto the county system that I could do, I could have a septic tank. However, the water department would not say that what the county sewer was not available, and he could not tell me that he could, tell me that would, I could have a septic tank, and I would like to have this settled. I was told by Mr. Hozak that, well, the community development, that it would be worked out in this meeting here. It is a mile, almost a mile, from the property to the county sewer and under Dallas Highway plus turn lanes, and it would be unpractical for me and impossible for me to pay for hooking onto the county sewer.
Yes, sir.
That property is an eyesore in West Marion, and I'm, I've put a lot of money into it already, and I'm willing to put more money into it.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Can we amend that, that you'd be allowed to use the septic, but in the event sewer becomes available, would we be required to hook to it?
We can. There was a variance for septic in 1996 on a property that's over 3,000 feet. So I was merely trying to give him the opportunity, if the Health Department would approve it, to put a sewer in there. So if sewer becomes available and practical, then we would require you to quit at that time, which may be yours in the future.
Thank you, sir.
Sir, would you tell me what, I'm, I'm sorry, yeah?
Okay. Why don't we, I think we've got it figured out. Have a seat, and his staff will get with you in a minute and explain it to you a little bit further.
Okay. All right, good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Rob, if you would. Thank you. Next item, please.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Moving into land use permits on the consent agenda. LUP 22, Kathleen E. Taylor, request a land use permit renewal for the purpose of allowing more unrelated adults to the county code permits in Land Lot 186 of the 20th District. The property is located on the northeast side of Sunbrook Way, east of Sunbrook Drive. The Planning Commission recommends approval of LUP 22 for 24 months, subject to the following conditions. No on-street parking. Approval for two unrelated adults only. Applicants shall not cause any nuisances in the neighborhood outside of the house to be painted and maintained, whether it's rotten wood over the next 24-month period. Is the applicant present? Let the record show the applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed, the LUP 22? Let the record show there's no one opposed, and that completes the consent agenda, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. I'd like to bring forward a motion that we approve the consent agenda as revised, and as revised is that Z-78 was pulled to be heard as part of the regular cases. Is there a second?
Second.
Any comments? Call a question. Motion carries 5-0. Thank you. Mr. Ward? Do you sit here from Z-78? Mr. Ward? Maybe he's out talking. Great. Call the first case, please.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Rezoning case Z-47, Clarit Realty, LLT, or Limited, formerly known as Robert Neil Castleberry, request rezoning from CF to GC for the purpose of business retail in Land Lot 300 of the 17th District. The property is located at the southwest intersection of South Cobb Drive and Nick Lane. The applicant's representative is present. Is there anyone here opposed to rezoning case Z-47? Let the record show there's no one opposed.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. For the record, I'm Kevin Moore here, on behalf of the owner applicant Clarit Realty in this application for rezoning. This property is a small piece of property, it's a half acre located on South Cobb Drive. This property is zoned, if you'll see in your books and in your materials, is zoned FC, which is, stands for, stands for future commercial. That's a category for, if you're not familiar, or for those that may not be familiar, future commercial is a category that was phased out in Cobb County zoning ordinance back in the mid-'90s. So it's no longer what we consider to be a viable category, though it still exists in very small numbers in the county. It was a category that was used in the zoning ordinance initially when it was adopted in 1972. In this case, in many cases where you have future commercial property, it's property that had been used for some type of commercial use that was anticipated to be changed in the future. As, and as such, its use was considered grandfathered until that grandfathered status was lost under the terms of the ordinance, as it was here. This property had been used as a commercial property, been used for many, many, many years as an auto repair establishment and business. That business finally left, and it had left for more than six continuous months, and as such, that grandfathered status was lost. And with a future commercial designation or zoning category, the owner cannot use it, cannot come back and put another tenant, have another prospective purchaser, have another user, perform any other work on the property other than absolutely necessary repairs or maintenance. And as such, zoning application has to come forward. This property is located in a community activity center, and it was proposed for rezoning to general commercial or GC. During the staff review process, the staff made a recommendation of approval, but recommended deleting that category to neighborhood retail commercial or NRC, primarily, I believe, due to this rather limited size of the, of the property. It's only half an acre, which means it is just meeting the minimum lot size requirements for a commercial tract in Cobb County. Staff also recommended the deletion, as I said, to NRC, as well as several additional recommendations for zoning conditions. Those were also adopted by your Planning Commission in its recommendation for approval and are agreeable to the owner. Primarily, those deal with limitations on the proposed use. Given that you have an existing building, which you see on the site plan, which is rather large for the site and limited parking, uses for this property will necessarily likewise be limited. The uses that are limited is recommended by staff and is recommended by the Planning Commission and agreed to by the owner, or that uses are limited to retail office or restaurant use only. No pawn shops or auto repair uses. We've also been requested to include within that prohibit, prohibitive list, no pawn shops, no auto repair uses, and no title pawn as well as a prohibited use, and that's agreeable as well. In addition, businesses that would be available, or retail uses that would be available for this property must meet the parking space requirements as determined by county staff during any type of plan review or review, such that we ensure that appropriate parking is on-site for any particular proposed use. Any changes to this site plan must be approved by minor modifications. If it's not minor, it must come back to the Board for full approval. The district commissioner is to approve any final elevations in building architecture and color to ensure that the color and architecture of any changes to the building are in keeping with the area. There'll be no outdoor storage or outdoor display of merchandise, which also has been problematic in the area for other types of grandfathered uses. So I think with this list of stipulations, that's agreeable to the owner, as recommended by staff and the Planning Commission as an attempt to clean up grandfathered aging businesses and uses that have been in the area, and agreeable to the owner. And you have to start somewhere, and I think with a property such as this, that's the intent of a future commercial category. Come back in and be brought up to current standards whenever that occurs. With that, I'm here to answer any questions. Again, I want to state that the owner is agreeable to these proposed conditions, and the Planning Commission likewise recommended approval. Here to answer any questions and respectfully request your approval of this zoning application subject to staff's conditions with the addition of the title pawn as a prohibited use. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Commissioner Cupid.
Thank you, Chairman. Attorney Moore, thank you for the modification of this second stipulation from the Planning Commission with respect to restricted uses. I just want to clarify that you mentioned the restriction of title ponds, but title ponds and loans. Also, we had discussed my conversation I had with the residential property owner behind the site who was concerned about vegetation growing from this side onto her property. If that, I didn't hear that addressed in the stipulation, but would like to add, any vegetative growth from property onto adjacent residential property is to be removed and kept from approaching onto the residential property.
Certainly, that's agreeable. Yes, thank you.
Okay. Thank you. With that, I move to delete the zoning category for Z-47 to the NRC zoning category, subject to Planning Commission comments and recommendations, staff comments and recommendations, the modification of the second Planning Commission bullet to include no title loans or ponds, and to also include the additional stipulation that I read regarding the vegetative growth. also include the additional stipulation that I read regarding the vegetative growth. Second.
Just want to be clear that Kevin, you spoke to, but in plan review, you're going to be required to meet the parking requirements as to the use that you're bringing forward at that point.
That, that is correct.
We don't have to stipulate to that because that's code, but I want to just remind your applicant of that requirement.
Correct, yes, that, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Call a question? Motion carries five zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's, yeah, so due to unforeseen complications, we're going to go to Z-78 next, please.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Res zoning case Z-78 Frank Ward, requests rezoning from R-80 to R-30 for the purpose of a single-family house. In Land Lots 365 and 376 of the 19th District, the property is located on the southwest side of Wright Road, east of Poplar Springs Road. The applicant is present. There was one person here in opposition. All those wishing to address the board, please come forward and be sworn in. Please come forward to Mr. Ward.
Mr. Ward, please come forward, please.
We're, my dad actually owns a property.
I'm sorry, I'm going to need your name for the record, please.
Travis Ward.
Thank you, sir.
My dad owns a property and my wife and I are just wanting to build a single-family home on about three-quarters of an acre there. And we had no opposition to begin with. We, we did all the procedures correctly and everything, so I don't know what the issue is, so that's all I have to say.
Okay. Why don't we hear from the opposition and perhaps we'll have you come back if there's any questions we need to ask at that time, so.
Thank you.
Stay near. Opposition, please. Thank you, sir. Seeing there's no opposition, I'd like to close the public hearing on Z-78 and present it to the district commissioner for a motion, please.
Like Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve Z-78 is presented and approved by staff and planning commission.
Any other comments? Call a question? Motion carries five zero. Can we do other business? Let's, let's, so what's happened is Commissioner Ott left his book at home that has all his notes in, for Z-71 and 73. His assistant is on our way back with that. So that means he's buying lunch for the entire room today. Consequently, what we'd like to do, just in, to assist him in this, and it's, it's unfortunate that we're here, I mean, he forgot, I mean, that happens, we're all human, so what we're going to do is try to accommodate that and what I'd like to do is go to other business. And let's, let's take that, those cases up and hopefully she'll be back by then. Just glad you don't live in the north, northern part of Northwest Cobb. Other business item number 30.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Board. Item number 30 is to consider amending the site plan and zoning stipulations for certain residents of Lost Mountain Trails subdivision regarding rezoning application Z-59 of 2004. The property is located on the western side of Lost Mountain Road, north of Macklin Road, in Land Lots 429 and 430 of the 19th District. By way of background, the subject property was rezoned to R-20 OSC in 2004 for an open space subdivision. Subdivision was begun in 2005 and sat mainly unfinished through, through the recent recession. Since the end of the recession, most of the houses have been built and sold. This other business request is being brought forward by several residents who have a backyard that contains a 30-foot maintained natural undisturbed buffer in the area of lots 1 through 13. The residents would like the board of commissioners to consider deleting this buffer since there was not much in the buffer area to begin with. It should be noted that this subdivision was purchased from the former owner, who was Mr. Howard, to the north, who used both tracks as a farm for very many years. Much of the property was open fields prior to the Howard sales and both tracks were used as part of the farm. This helps to explain why there was not much in the 30-foot buffer to begin with. This other business action stems from notice of violations issued by code enforcement regarding the lack of vegetation in the buffer area. If the buffer area is deleted or amended, all other zoning conditions would remain in effect. We would ask the board of commissioners to open a public hearing to consider the proposed site plan stipulation amendment.
Thank you. At this time, we'll open a public hearing for other business item number 30, or public comment period, whether it's anyone here wishing to speak for or against other business item number 30. If you would come forward, be sworn in first.
Good morning, Commissioner, Chairman. My name is Nicole Nurse, for the record. I just want to state, as Mr. Peterson has already stated, the residents of Lost Mountain Trails, we do have a desire to maintain the green space in, in our subdivision. We just believe that having a 30-foot undisturbed buffer is a little excessive, as most of our lots are only 120 to 170 feet in depth. So having a 30-foot undisturbed buffer would consume about 18 to 25% of our lots. And I also want to point out that the vegetation that was originally on each of our lots is still remaining. We have not disturbed any of the undisturbed buffer thus far. So that's all I really have to say. And I brought some pictures just to show, as Mr. Peterson stated, that we believe it was a horse farm to begin with. And so the, the trees that were there originally are still remaining. So that's all I have.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. My name is Jeffrey Gordon. I live at 4240 Thayer Drive. I just want to add that behind my home, there's no trees whatsoever. All I have is dirt. The only thing that's separating my house from 1964 Lost Mountain Road is a four-foot chain leak fence. And every time I come out my back door, I'm looking right at the front yard of 1964 Lost Mountain Road. I'm sure they would like privacy, just like I would like privacy. So I'm asking if I would be able to build a privacy fence that goes all the way back to this little four-foot fence that's already located there? And that's all I got to add. Any questions?
Thank you. Thank you. Next speaker.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is James Sukvich. I reside with my partner at 1985 Whitman Drive. I would like to remove the buffer behind my, behind our property. As you can see, right, I'm sorry, as you can see right here, this is my property. The 30-foot buffer is in a unique area because I have to go to, at an angle. And what I'd like to do, as you see here, is this is all open space. I've got a fence and for the vegetation that's here, I like to keep that trimmed and cut because of pet, pests that come under the fence and of course attract my dogs to them. What I, what I have done in the past is cut this previously within the boundary, or I'm sorry, outside the boundary of the 30-foot, but the resident at 1960, I believe it is, has filed several complaints against me for cutting that when it was clearly outside the boundary. I'd just like to keep this neat because as you can see, this is all open space right here. So I just would like to remove the buffer to keep, to keep it neat for my pets and keep pests away. That's all.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hello, my name is Lauren Gaines. I'm at Lot 10 in Lost Mountain Trails subdivision. My property is directly behind, I guess, 1946 Lo, Lost Mountain. And I just recently moved into the subdivision in late January. And when I moved, we wanted to clean up that area a little bit within the 30-foot buffer and because the leaves and infestation was just there and probably has been there for years. So we went into that buffer to try to clean it up with a mower. And when we did, 1946 came videotaping us and harassing us, telling us that we could not go into that buffer to just clean it up. We didn't want to disturb the vegetation, just get the property cleaned up as fast as we could. So I would like for it to be reduced as well or done away with.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Good morning, Commissioners. Chairman Lee, my name is Chris Rakoff. Our property at 1964 Lost Mountain Road is adjacent to 14 of the 45 home sites in the Lost Mountain Trails subdivision. That accounts for 30% of the neighborhood backs up to our home. This includes all the properties the applicants seeking to amend the site stipulations to remove the 30-foot buffer. We're opposed to this amendment. Our property would see the greatest impact if this amendment was to pass. We would lose the natural sight and sound barrier that we bought when we purchased the property in 2012. We'd also lose some of the privacy that we've come to enjoy because of the tree-lined fence that is part of the buffer. We're not alone in this opposition. I forwarded to Commissioner Weatherford five statements from landowners who surround Lost Mountain Trails on both the Lost Mountain side and the Macklin roadside. These residents have lived there for decades and were aware of the site stipulations and site plan when Lost Mountain Trails was, was built and they are in opposition to any change in the current buffer or the green spaces. Should this amendment pass, we'll set a precedent and we'll open up the door for more of the homeowners to come forward to try to eliminate the buffer, which we've come to enjoy, and even some of the green spaces in the future. We knew there'd be additional building in Lost Mountain Trails when we bought our property, but we always knew that the buffer would be there to protect us. There are some trees on our side of the property, but most of the properties, except for Mr. Gordon's and Ms. Nurse's, that's lots seven, I believe, and 12, have, have trees on the property. This is our home site, as you can see. It's tree-lined on the entire fence line. Thank you. It's tree-lined on the entire fence line. This is our backyard looking toward the back of the property, trees. This is our backyard, tree-lined fence buffer. This is lots, lot one of the property. They've cut back to the fence. Lot two has maintained part of their buffer. As you can see, they're to the fence as well. This is Ms. Golden's property. We worked with the developer to reestablish this buffer. You can see the Krista Marys growing here. Originally, the developer had cut all the way back to the fence line, but we did work with the developer to show that the buffer was still there. This is a wider shot of that property. To the right is a new construction that's going in. This is the buffer that exists on that property. As you can see, it's well-treed on that side of the property. This is the Retoria Home, lot number eight. All those trees, with the exception of one, are inside the buffer. This is Mr. Gordon's property on lot seven. He's correct. There is a blank space there, however, given the fact that we've got growth on our side of the fence, there's an opportunity for growth inside his area as well. This is the latest construction, the buffer that the young, the lady just spoke about, about cleaning the leaves. All the trees that you see, including the pines, are inside of that buffer on her property. We're opposed to this buffer for a number of reasons. We knew that it existed when we built our home there. Again, the other homeowners that surround the property are against this buffer. To maintain a green space community, we ask for your help in this matter.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker, please.
My name is Linda Rakoff. I live at 1964 Lost Mountain Road. Regarding Mr. Gordon's request for a fence, this commission established a process for these homeowners to erect fences that involves their HOA and then approval by the commission, so I'm not really sure why he hasn't taken advantage of that. The photo from April of 2005 that Ms. Nurse originally put up, it, it's clearly shows it when the developer initially clear-cut that entire area. The, I've read all the historical documents. I appreciate Mr. Peterson and Mr. Hosack's office for, and Mr. Weatherford's office for providing us with every piece of mail that was sent between the zoning and the planning and the commission and the developers and all the attorneys involved. So we knew the history of, the difficulty of getting Lost Mountain Trails even built. The reason there's a 30-foot non-disturbed buffer, and if you read all of the papers, like I've read all of, every word on every piece of paper, is to help with the OSC designation. The developer originally was not willing to give up enough green space for that OSC designation and it was his idea, not anybody else's, but the developer's idea to say, okay, we'll give, we'll give you a 30-foot non-disturbed buffer within every lot in the subdivision. Staff objected strenuously, hated and budge, so this body approved it with that stipulation. So now you have a bunch of people who own property that they can use, but they just can't clear-cut it and they're not happy. And it feels kind of like an habitual bad driver who keeps getting pulled over for crossing the center line and he goes to the judge and says, let's get rid of the center line so I don't get any more tickets. You know, Chris and I are not the bad guys here. I would, I would suggest that, you know, anybody who wants to put up a fence, you've already got that opportunity. I would suggest to Mr. Gordon that if he would quit throwing industrial herbicide, a plant killer, on the area that is supposed to be a naturally maintained buffer, then things would naturally grow there. There were, there, there are a lot of native plants that would grow in the buffer if they don't keep getting cut down and mowed over. There is a lot of wildlife. There's a lot of nesting sites for migratory songbirds. We have a very strong native bluebird population in that area. Destroying the buffer is going to take away that. And I can speak to that because I spent 30 years as a volunteer and a consultant with NGOs and agencies within Interior Department, the State of Georgia, Cobb- NGOs and agencies within Interior Department, the State of Georgia, Cobb County, Fulton County, DeKalb County, the Carter Center, and a long list of things as an environmental educator. So I do kind of know what I'm talking about. The, the buffer was put there to protect environmental concerns, storm, stormwater runoff. We've already had to do significant grading to eliminate standing water because of how Lost Mountain Trails was graded. We do have stormwater runoff. Those concerns have not been addressed by staff. I would like to see those addressed. If you eliminate the buffer, it's going to cause a lot of environmental problems for, on our property and all the adjacent landowners. That's why the buffer was put in. We would ask that commission honor the original decision by this body and by your staff who are really, really smart people, um, and not eliminate the buffer. I'm sorry people bought property that they didn't know that part of it they couldn't fully utilize. But again, you know, they're asking you just to eliminate the center line, and I don't think that's very smart. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker? Seeing and hearing none, it's back to staff and the board. John, let me ask a couple of questions before I ask for your recommendation. Has the county accepted this subdivision yet?
Yes, I believe we have.
And what, in, in the paperwork that was provided with the application, the motion by Gorham, second by Owens, back on May eighteenth, two thousand and four. The sixth bullet says to maintain a natural perimeter buffers to be enhanced, bless you, to be enhanced with living trees, bushes, and other plantings ecologically compatible with the area, not to be clear-cut and mowed, or to be maintained by the owner and approved by the county arborist. Was all that inspected and put in place before we accepted?
It was permitted, Mr. Chairman, but it's my belief that when the original developer lost the subdivision during the recession, that nothing else was done in this buffer area and just sat unfinished, incomplete.
And how did we, how did we, as a county, accept it if this wasn't met? Regardless of who built it out after it went into, what I, what I, if I'm understanding correctly, the original applicant, Sir Properties, lost the property and was picked up by somebody else. Did Sir Properties actually complete this subdivision or no?
No, they did not. And there's one discrepancy, Mr. Chairman. What, what you just read is what's written in the minutes, but if you go to the approved site plan from two thousand and five, it says thirty-foot undisturbed buffer. So the arborists may have interpreted that as just leaving it as is, which there was nothing in it, in most parts of it.
And Commissioners, that's why I try to be very specific when we talk about buffers.
Right.
Thank you. What's staff's recommendation?
Before I make a staff recommendation, Mr. Chairman, there's one little bit of housekeeping with this. On page number two of your, of your packet, there's a list of homeowners in there. The last one on the list, Jason Arnold and James Sickvik, Lot Number Fourteen, they actually don't have any thirty-foot buffer in the back of their lot. What they're talking about is buffer on HOA open space, and they can't technically remove a buffer that's not on their property. So anything that goes forward from here on, if the buffer's amended or deleted, we need to delete Lot, uh, Lot Number Fourteen because they don't have any standing because the buffer's not on their property. With the staff recommendation, Mr. Chairman, staff recommends that the buffer be reduced to a ten-foot landscape buffer to be, be approved by the county arborist installed by December thirty-first, two thousand and fifteen. The mature trees should be left in the buffer where possible. The buffer may include a six-foot wooden privacy fence. Delete Lot Number Fourteen out of the request since it does not have any landscape buffer on it. Open space to remain as originally approved regarding acreage. And the HOA to replant the thirty-foot buffer, uh, to the rear of Lot Fourteen prior to any more permits. And all previous conditions not in conflict.
That's staff's recommendation. Thank you. Commissioner, do you have a question?
Yeah. And you may have answered this with what you just said, but will reducing the buffer affect the open space requirement at all, or will they still have the amount, the percentage?
The reduction of the buffer not affect the open space acreage, it still remains the same. All, all this buffer's on private lots.
Okay.
Commissioner Weatherford?
Thank you. Thanks. That was my question as well about the OSC number of acreage, uh, the amount of acreage. Uh, this is, uh, I met with many people on this, the applicant and the, uh, homeowners behind this, and it appears that this is just one of the casualties of the recession and that it did not get planted as per the recommendations back then because having reviewed photographs of before and after, it doesn't appear that anything has been disturbed there, just nothing was ever put there. And, uh, staff and I have worked and I've talked to all the parties involved, and I think this is the best solution in the fact that we're going to get a buffer where there really wasn't one, put in when it was supposed to be, and it will allow the visual screening and the natural buffer that, uh, we intended when we put in there. So I agree with staff's recommendation and I can make a motion as such.
Thank you. I'll second the motion. Any comments? Commissioner Otte?
Um, I, I have to disagree. I was on the planning commission when this was done and, and, um, also was on the committee that formed the OSC zoning code. The combination of buffers and green space was intended to be the trade-off for smaller lots joining, um, bigger properties, for example, this R-eighty and the R-thirty. Part of the OSC concept was that you would buffer and protect the outside edges of a more intense subdivision, which would have smaller lots in the surrounding community, but both go together. And just because it has green space doesn't mean that it's, um, reducing it from thirty feet to ten feet. That's basically making this the same as a regular subdivision, and I think it sets a very, um, bad precedent for all the other OSC zonings that are out there. So I cannot support it.
Appreciate that. I'm, I'm, might be inclined to agree with, I, I do agree with where your logic is, but the conflict that exists between the site plan and the stipulations and that we accepted this and didn't catch it at that time leads me to lean on the side of trying to come up with a reasonable solution. So I agree with you conceptually, but I think there's circumstances here, mitigating circumstances that allow us to do this. Any other questions or comments? Call the question. Motion carries four, one. Commissioner Otte in opposition. Let's go ahead and finish all the business items since we're in that mode.
Thank you.
I believe Commissioner Otte now has his notes for the other cases, and we'll come back to that in a minute. So if folks who are with us just a minute. Other business item number thirty-one, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item number thirty-one is to consider amending the site plan for John Saunders regarding rezoning application number sixty-six of nineteen eighty-four for property located at the northeast intersection of Bootin' Link Road and Wade Green Road in Land Lot Fifty-Five to Twentieth District. The property was rezoned neighborhood shopping to a site plan in nineteen eighty-four, per court order. The shopping center was developed in the nineteen eighties. The applicant proposes to demolish an old ATM foundation left over from a removed ATM machine. After removal, the applicant will install a new Chase Bank ATM in the same general location. The new ATM machine will not reduce the number of park spaces for the shopping center. It will not affect any of the existing landscaping. The proposed site plan and proposed rendering for the new facility is attached for your review. If approved, all previous conditions would remain in effect. We would ask the Board of Commissioners to conduct a public hearing and consider the proposed site plan amendment.
Thank you. We'll open the public hearing for this other business item, number thirty-one. Anyone wishing to speak for or against this item? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Staff's recommendation, please.
Mr. Chairman, staff would recommend that the Board of Commissioners approve the request subject to the letter from Mr. John Saunders dated, uh, July tenth, two thousand and fifteen, which includes the attachments featuring the site plans and all previous conditions not in conflict.
Thank you. Commissioner, Commissioner Burrow?
Yes, this is, there was, um, an ATM there previously, so this will, by removing that and installing a new one, will clean that up and look nicer, and, um, they're not reducing the number of parking, so I have no problem with this, and I would make a motion to approve.
Thank you. Second. Any comments? Call the question. Motion carries five, oh. Other business item number thirty-two, please.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Item number thirty-two is consider amending the site plan for Mr. John Saunders regarding rezoning application one sixty-seven of nineteen eighty-seven for property located on the north side of East West Connector between Hospital South Drive and Brookwood Drive and on the south side of Mulkey Road, east of Ostell Road in Land Lot Nine Twenty of the nineteenth district. By way, by way of background, the subject property was rezoned general commercial to a site plan in nineteen eighty-seven. The shopping center was developed in the nineteen eighties and was used for a number of years. As of the last couple of years, the property has been redeveloping very nicely, which includes a new Elliott Fitness, some shops, and a new restaurant. The applicant proposes to install a new Chase, uh, Bank ATM near the new restaurant. The new ATM facility will take up eight parking spaces, which still leaves the shopping center with the minimum number of parking spaces required. The proposed site plan and the proposed renderings, uh, of the new facility are attached for your review. If approved, all previous conditions would, would remain in effect. The staff would ask the Board of Commissioners to conduct a public hearing to consider the proposed site plan amendment.
Thank you. We'll open a public hearing for other business item number thirty-two. Anyone wishing to speak for or against this item, only please come forward. Seeing and hearing none? Yep? Almost.
I believe that's the applicant.
Thank you. I believe you need to be sworn in, sir, unless you're an attorney.
I really need to be sworn in.
Hi, my name is John Saunders. I'm here, uh, to ask for approval to install this new ATM. There was none present at this property previously. Uh, it's going to be a standard doghouse-type ATM with, uh, bollards, clearance bar. And we will repatch and seal the area, re-stripe it after the, uh, the work is done. Uh, I understand that there was, one of the property owners neighboring this had some questions about future improvements to the parking lot, and, uh, I don't know if that party is here. That's the reason I came up to, to speak.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? Seeing and hearing none, public hearing is closed.
Mr. Chairman, staff recommends the Board of Commissioners approve the request subject to the letter from Mr. John Saunders dated July tenth, twenty, twenty fifteen, which includes the attachments featuring the site plans, Cobb DOT, the approved traffic circulation plan, district commissioner to approve the final location of the ATM machine, and all previous conditions not in conflict.
Thank you. Commissioner Cupid?
So moved.
Second.
Any comments? Call the question. This motion carries five to zero. Item number thirty-three, please.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Item number thirty-three is consider a, uh, site plan and stipulation amendment from Mr. Lamont McCray regarding rezoning application Z-one forty-one of two thousand and three for property located on the east side of Cobb Parkway, south of Third Army Road in Land Lot Two and Thirty-Seven of Twentieth District. Subject property was rezoned light industrial in two thousand and three for a self-service storage facility, which includes outdoor storage of boats, cars, and RVs. One of the zoning conditions prohibited outdoor storage within the fifty-foot front setback. This area, this area is currently delineated by a row of shrubs and you can't park in this area. The applicant's business is located within close proximity to Lake Alatuna, and the applicant would like to use this area to park additional recreational vehicles. The applicant's proposal would not exceed the maximum allowable impervious surface for this lot. Stormwater management will verify this, that there's enough pond capacity at planer view. If approved, all previous conditions would remain in effect. Staff would ask the Board of Commissioners to conduct a public hearing to consider the proposed site plan stipulation amendment.
Thank you. Well, now I have a public hearing on item number thirty-three. Anyone wishing to speak for or against, please come forward.
Good morning. My name is Buddy McLaughlin. Um, I'm with Terrain Solutions, the engineering firm that did the original site plan for, um, for Mr. McCray's, uh, outside storage facility here. It's an existing seven-point-six-two-acre facility. Um, the additional storage, the outside storage, just parking, is, uh, is going to be along, uh, US Highway Forty-One. Uh, there's no change in grading from this. All they're going to do is strip the vegetation and add gravel parking. When we did the original, uh, stormwater management plan for this, we planned it for a maximum impervious surface for the entire site. The, uh, the detention pond was built that way, and, uh, there is no, uh, the additional gravel parking will not result, result in an increase in runoff from that which was originally developed. Uh, the fence along US Forty-One will be maintained as it exists, as well as the vegetation between the fence and the right-of-way of US Forty-One. So, um, the, the only real change here is, uh, is adding some gravel parking space to an area that's, uh, mostly grass right now, with the exception of a, of a, uh, uh, row of shrubs and, uh, and, uh, adding that gravel so that he can park additional outside, uh, storage, um, RVs and that, and whatnot.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? Seeing and hearing none, the public hearing is closed. Staff's recommendation, please.
Mr. Chairman, staff would recommend the Board of Commissioners approve the request subject to Cobb DOT comments, stormwater management comments, and the deletion of bullets four and five in the original zoning amendments, and all previous conditions not in conflict.
Thank you. Commissioner Weatherford?
So moved as presented, sir.
Second.
Any comments? Call the question. Motion carries five, zero. Thank you. Item thirty-four.
Item number thirty-four is consider amending the zoning stipulations for Trayton Homes LLC regarding rezoning application Z-four of two thousand and thirteen for property located on the eastern side of Mars Hill Church Road at Stylesboro Lane in Land Lot One Forty-Six of the Twentieth District. By way of background, the subject property was rezoned R-twenty in two thousand and thirteen for a subdivision subject to many, uh, stipulations. Uh, there is a cemetery on the adjacent property located in the northwest corner of the property. The zoning condition called for a thirty-five-foot buffer adjacent to the cemetery with signs that read cemetery preservation buffer, do not disturb every fifty feet along the thirty-five-foot buffer line. The applicant would like to amend the stipulation to have the cemetery signs placed on the fence that separates the cemetery from the residential properties, which is ten feet off the cemetery boundary. The thirty-five-foot buffer would remain intact. If approved, all previous conditions would remain in effect. The staff would ask the Board of Commissioners to conduct a public hearing to consider the proposed stipulation amendment.
Thank you. I'd like to open a public hearing now for item number thirty-four. Anyone wishing to speak for or against, come forward. Mr. Moore?
Yes, good morning. Kevin Moore here on behalf of Trayton Homes, and I'm just here if there's any questions that the board has with respect to this request. Mr. Peterson, I think, explained it very well. Uh, I'm here to answer those questions. Uh, this is just to clarify and establish where those signs would be located, located along the fence and the property line, which we think is a much better location. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else?
Just one second. Now, for the record, my name's Jimmy Richards. It's spelled J-I-M-I. For, uh, President Mars Hill Memorial Association, we maintain the cemetery. Cemetery is a hundred and seventy-eight years old, was five years younger in Cobb County government. Well, we met here two and a half years ago. We worked with Trayton Homes and with Kevin Moore to, to work everything out. Commissioner Gorham even thanked us all for working together and worked towards these stipulations. There should have been water under the bridge, but two and a half years later, they wanting to bring the stream back up on the other side of the bridge. I have a lot of problems with them, uh, wanting to change this. We agreed to a buffer. We're talking a lot about buffers in here today. There's a reason for a buffer, but our reason for that buffer is to protect our cemetery. It's a hundred and seventy-eight years old. If you can see, uh, up on the pictures, right there is the, uh, that picture there is behind the schoolhouse, Mars Hill Schoolhouse. That is inside the, the lot that is right behind the schoolhouse. See that corner? That's very disturbed, isn't it? Show the next one. That's what it looked like in the wintertime. You see all that trees and vegetation back here? There's another shot of where the vegetation and all was at prior to May twenty-fourth, two thousand and fifteen. Next one? That's the corner of their fence. That's ten foot off the boundary line of Mars Hill Church, uh, Mars Hill Schoolhouse. There is the corner of the boundary line, which, by the way, uh, District One engineer, Michael Wright, said not to worry about any runoff from the cemetery. As you can see, we're flooded. Next picture? That is the corner where we look out at the Next picture. That is the corner where we look out at the schoolhouse there. If you look on the left side, back, left side of that fence, that's undisturbed. That's ten foot, belongs to the homeowner. That's what undisturbed is. Notice on the other side of the fence, it's clear. Next one. Also, Kevin Moore, when we met two and a half years ago, it's on the record, it's on the video that I sent to the commissioners, that they were agreeable to the fence being on the buffer line and it would go all the way to the road. That's where Mars Hill Church Road is. That's our driveway into the cemetery. There's, just to show you, there's no fence there. Next one. That's also the house on the right. When you go in the cemetery, notice there's no fence there. Next one. There's no fence there. The fence did not go all the way to the road as we stipulated to two and a half years ago. Again, that's where the fence is supposed to be, but it's flooded out because of the runoff from the development that Cobb County engineers says, don't worry about it. That is also behind the house, next to the driveway going into the cemetery, where there's supposed to be a fence that we agreed to two and a half years ago. That's down beside the driveway going into the cemetery on the right, where there's supposed to be a fence that we agreed to two and a half years ago, not to run off, worry about the runoff from the development. Next one. That is the vegetation that used to be on the buffer. Next. There is what you just saw, the picture before that. It's clear cut. Trees have been removed. And there, there's the other picture in the wintertime when there was vegetation there. I believe that's all of it, yeah. The point is, when we met several times, Rob Hosack, we met at cemetery, February the tenth. Thank you, I like it. February the tenth, we met at the back of the cemetery because the homeowner that just moved in put a fence up. We agreed to a six-foot vinyl-coated jangle link fence around the buffer of the cemetery going all the way to the road, and we asked that it be put on the buffer line specifically because unfortunately, not saying this has happened yet, but we're looking in the future. We're a hundred and seventy-eight years old. We're not going anywhere. We'll still be there. But unfortunately, in some buffers, people would cut their grass and clippings and tree branches and throw them over the fence. The reason behind having it on the thirty-five-foot buffer line was, in case that ever happened, we could clean it up, get it back over the other side of the fence. Well, the homeowner put a fence in on his own, and it's a foot shorter, and it's not jangle link fence, it's not wrought iron fence, it's some tubular aluminum fence. It's a nice fence. I, I, you know, we let it go. We worked with them, you know. It's the homeowner was not told by the developer about these cemetery buffers, and I still question that. Show me in writing where these homeowners were told about what the Cemetery Preservation Commission rules are with the county code about these buffers. Because I kind of find it hard that if I knew I wasn't supposed to cut a certain area, I wouldn't go in there and cut it. But the homeowner put a fence back there that's short. Well, we let it go. We worked it out. You know, fine. But you know what? How, how many times we gotta keep working things out? Because they're not, they haven't even done what we said we, they would do two and a half years ago. And now, when we met in February this year, February twenty-third, I contacted Rob Hosack email, what about my signs? Because at that time in February, he told Post and Trayton Homes, well, do you want me to still do the signs? And Rob Hosack told him, go ahead and put the signs up. That's got to be done. That's February this year, six months later. No, no signs. I inquired February twenty-third about my signs. Again, March thirty-first, I asked, where's our signs? Because the homes were being finished and people were moving in, and I wanted to stop, quote, "any spring cleaning or spring fever they may get as a new homeowner. It's their backyard." I'm working on it. I'm working on it. On May the twenty-fourth, on a Sunday, we had our memorial service there as we do every Memorial Day weekend on Sunday. And American Legion Post twenty-nine, Horace Orr Post, Horace Orr is buried right there next to that buffer lot. A member of the Cemetery Commission, and I, and I'm sorry I cannot think of his name, but he was recently appointed by Commissioner Weatherford, was present because he was in the American Legion Post that was doing the service. They were there cutting the buffer down. He witnessed it, and he's on the Cemetery Commission. I don't know if anyone's here with the commission today that can, I don't know what their recommendations are on this, but he sat there and witnessed it, watched him cut down the buffer line. So here we go. Six months later, seven fourteen, Trayton Homes files for an amendment that changes buffer. And here we are, two and a half years later, we're right back in here. Those buffers, the signage was supposed to be put on poles every fifty feet down that property line. But keep in mind, had the fence been put where it's supposed to have been put, I wouldn't have a problem with them being on the fence. But now you're gonna walk through a thirty-five-foot buffer to read a sign on the fence that says Cemetery Preservation Buffer, Do Not Disturb. That would make me think it's on the other side of the fence because it's not disturbed. But in this, this particular lot, yeah, you can walk through it because there's nothing there anymore. You can walk straight to it. The other ones, so far, knock wood, I haven't had any problem with. They've taken care of that, you know, left it alone, hadn't done anything. One of the managers of the subdivision for Trayton Homes has asked me if one of them wanted to plant some cypress trees back there in a fire pit. What does "do not disturb" mean in the cemetery? We're a hundred and seventy-eight years old, and I was never present when this web company did the archaeology study on it, but I can show you where people's buried outside of that buffer. The old timers, the last thirty, forty years, have showed me where people were buried. Because unfortunately, in early nineteen hundreds, nineteen seventeen, we had the Spanish Flu epidemic. They buried people so quick back in there, they don't know where they were buried. In the very back part of the cemetery, it's the old part, they buried outside the lines. That was McClure property. I'm just going by what the old timers told me. And you walk around there, and I see some areas that I questioned. I was, I don't, I was not present when there was a archaeology study done. But to sit here and want to put, we're, we're against it. We want you to do what you said you would do two and a half years ago, what the commission, what we all worked together for. If you're not gonna protect a hundred and seventy-eight-
Thank you, sir. Your time is expired.
Cemetery in this county, then what chance, why we have the law? And the application is a-
Thank you, sir.
There's a mistake on the application, though. Mars Hill Presbyterian Church has nothing to do with the cemetery.
Thank you, sir.
That needs to be deleted. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak? Seeing and hearing none, the public hearing is closed. John, what say you?
Mr. Chairman, the staff would recommend that you approve the applicant's request subject to Exhibit A from Kevin Moore, received July fourteenth, twenty fifteen. All wrought iron fencing to remain as it exists today, and all previous conditions not in conflict.
Commissioner Weatherford.
Before I make a motion, I'd like to ask a few questions, if you don't mind. I'm a little confused. Is the fence that we see, is that a fence put up by the developer or by each individual homeowner?
The wrought iron type fencing was put up by the developer, I believe, on the ten-foot cemetery-
So not by the homeowners indicated by the-
The fences, the, the fence along the, the buffer line was put in by the developer. I believe the property owners had put in the fences in their own backyards that connect to it.
In the front, well, certainly. And all we're discussing is whether or not the signs should be on the fence or in the middle of the buffer or-
That's right.
In the buffer. What about-
I'm sorry. Is the fence in the right location as per the original zoning?
The fence is in the correct location.
Thank you.
Is the fence completed per the original zoning?
I, I believe it is, Commissioner Weatherford.
It, it, I'm reading it. It says that it should be out of perimeter of the senate, the property line. Does that mean every home along the perimeter of the fence should be along the cemetery? Or the whole property? Because it indicated that the road there should-
It's just where the cemetery is, which is in northwest corner. That fence you see that's along the back is actually ten feet on the homeowner's property lines. So ten feet past, fence is still their property, and that's where the boundary line is for the cemetery.
I'm concerned with the fence that goes down the, the road toward Mars Hill. That was not included in the original stipulation, the one where there is no fence? Right there?
That property where that driveway is, the gravel driveway, that was actually the developer's property, and they gave that to the cemetery because the cemetery had a road there for so many years.
I guess I'm a little, but is there supposed to be a fence there? Is that considered the cemetery property line or the church property line? I mean, I'm trying to find out if there should be a fence there.
That's the cemetery's property line.
So according to what I read here, then there should be a fence there.
That's right. Well, a part of it is supposed to be, I think, a wood-type fence, Mr. Commissioner, where there are no graves along the road, but, but most of it is the wrought iron type fencing along that property line.
All right. Well, I would like to instruct staff to review that to make sure the developer has completed the stipulations that are noted here from the original zoning.
Yes, sir.
All right, Mr. Chairman. Anybody else? Since the applicant is only requesting to move the signs to the fence, I did do some research and have reviewed others. Is it consistent, by the way, that all cemeteries have the signs on the fence or away from the fence, or is it a consensus here?
Mr. Commissioner, it does vary from site to site. Some have them on the, it's really a fifty-foot buffer is what's required, but on this one, it's a forty-five-foot buffer. But some do have them on the fence line.
I would like to make a recommendation to agree with staff as presented. Make a motion to do that, yes.
Sir, a second.
Second, but I have some questions.
Commissioner Otte.
I cannot agree with the motion. First off, especially at older cemeteries, part of the reason that the sign is put out where it is absent, and I know RS Webb did an archaeological study, but it was probably level one. Is that correct, John?
I'm not sure what level it was, Mr. Otte, Commissioner Otte, but, but I was out there when they did the study from RS Webb with, with Helgong, and they did do it properly, in my opinion.
Well, I'm not saying they didn't do it properly, but the, the gentleman who spoke in opposition is concerned about not all the graves are marked, and in particularly in the older cemeteries, part of the reason that we do the fifty-foot buffer and try to protect as much around the outside edge of the cemetery is because many cases, we don't know if all the graves have been identified, and so absent, actually going out in the ground with the long pole and, and checking.
And that's exactly-
Did they do that?
He had a long metal rod sticking in the ground.
Right, okay. And part of the other reason that the signs are put off of the fence, where I've seen them up against the fence is where there is no vegetation. So for example, there's a cemetery, there's some cemeteries in East Cobb where the neighborhood was built right around it, like Indian Hills and all that. But a lot of times, the reason that the signs are put away from the fence is to try to protect the buffer, which is not just to protect the tranquility of the cemetery, but also to keep grass clippings and yard waste and things like that from going over the fence and piling up in the cemetery. And I think that some of the drawing or the pictures that we saw showed that exactly what happens without the sign is that it gets cut, and then now all of a sudden, you're back at the fence. And so the whole purpose for the buffer is lost. So I can't support moving the signs.
Commissioner Cupid.
In our book, it says thirty-five-foot buffer. You're saying there's a forty-five-foot buffer?
The way the board approved this in twenty thirteen is the boundary of the cemetery and the subdivision, there's a ten-foot buffer where the fence is, and that belongs to the homeowners. Then past that's a thirty-five-foot undisturbed buffer, so it's forty-five feet in total. And the thirty-five-foot line is where they put the signs. They want to put the signs from the thirty-five-foot buffer line onto the ten-foot fence line.
Okay.
Very unusual the way they approved it.
Yeah. That is, because, okay.
So that is probably part of that, right?
No, sir.
But from the original zoning, you also have number one E, permanent sign stating Cemetery Preservation Buffer, Do Not Disturb, shall be erected at fifty-foot intervals along the fence. That's in fifty-foot intervals, that's not the fifty-foot buffer. That's going across, correct?
It's going along the buffer line. That's right.
Okay, so they would be in front of the buffer?
They would be every fifty feet on the fence line, not at the thirty-five-foot undisturbed buffer line.
Okay, because it's ten feet forward.
That's right. It's ten feet onto the residence property.
Just, just so I'm clear, we have, there's a ten-foot buffer on the residence property line. Fence is ten foot in.
That's right.
And there's a thirty-foot, foot, undisturbed buffer past the fence in the same residence-
That's correct. So it's forty-five feet altogether.
All right. And-
On each individual lot.
On all the lots that have cemetery that back up to them, it is like that.
So we agreed to a fence at ten foot off and a sign at forty-five feet off.
That's right.
Essentially, we agreed to a forty-five-foot buffer.
That's right.
And so the request is to take the signage off the forty-five-foot mark and move it to the ten-foot mark.
That's right.
So how would anybody know that thirty-five feet is part of the buffer?
It's still shown on the final plat, Mr. Chairman, as an undisturbed buffer area.
Individual lots or final plat?
On the final plat.
Do we accept this yet? This subdivision?
Yes, this has been recorded already.
And all these homes, all these homes have been bought and sold?
I believe all the houses along the cemetery buffer are finished.
I have that one out there.
In reading the, I'm on the Cemetery Preservation Comments for the zoning back when it was originally approved. One of the recommendations, and John, I don't know if this was accepted, you know, as part of staff comments, but it says that the, let me find it here. Talks about that, it says the fifty-foot undisturbed natural buffer shall be recorded as a conservation easement with the Cemetery Preservation Commission having third, third-party right of enforcement. Was that done? Because if it was, you cannot disturb the conservation easement.
And I'm not sure if that's been done yet, Mr. Commissioner Otte.
Right, but if, if it was part of the approval process, regardless of whether it was forty-five or fifty, it has to remain undisturbed.
That's right.
As a conservation easement. And if it hasn't been turned into a conservation easement, it's supposed to be. Is that correct?
Pardon me?
If, if it hasn't been recorded as a conservation easement, it's supposed to be.
That's right.
And that, and that would require a stipulation change. If, if in the approval, you know, looking at the minutes, if the board approved all staff comments, you know, not otherwise in conflict with the stipulation letter, then this would apply.
It, it does apply, Mr. Commissioner Otte, and it's not what they're asking to be changed.
No, but I mean, but if, if, and so part of the reason for keeping the signs, if it's supposed to be undisturbed, and it's supposed to be part of a conservation easement, then if you move the signs, there is no way for the individual property owner, other than as the chairman noted, on the recorded plat, which is not going to show up at someone's yard, you're, you're gonna have this stuff cut down. So.
Yet, I'm not sure I disagree with you. I'm more concerned the fact that it, it appears to me that one of the homeowners has not followed the buffers at all. And that there's not a fence there, is the way I understand it, should be there. And I know that's not what is the matter before us. And I think, to me, that's more crucial than where the sign is.
Well, but I think that shows exactly what can and probably will happen if you move the signs. That the homeowner is, unbeknownst to them, because there is nothing telling them, you're not supposed to be in here. And that's exactly why the signs get put where they do, because it's very difficult unless it's recorded on each individual plat for a homeowner to see when they close, then there is almost no way for them to know, and that's really the purpose of the signs.
So, Mr. Moore. All right, didn't even need to look up to know you were standing there.
That's okay.
Why, why are we moving the signs?
Well, perhaps I could help with this situation. First of all, I, I was not aware of the issues or concerns that Mr. Richards expressed. And back when we did this two and a half years ago, Mr. Richards and I resolved every issue, worked very well together. I, I know- I know his passion for that cemetery is well-deserved and well-earned. If I could, I'd like to request that the board hold this application for 30 days. Let me, let me get with Mr. Richards. I just, I did not know he had these issues, which were more than just simply where the signs go. He had some other issues, and regardless, those need to be looked at, and I think Commissioner Ott, Commissioner Weatherford, y'all both have identified some issues as well that, as it relates to these these conditions, the way they were presented, and then they were changed at the hearing, if you read the, we presented them one way in a stipulation letter, and then there was some changes that were adopted by the board at the hearing, and it seems that I think that there was a lack of clarity that went forward as it relates to that, not just where the signs go and the fence and how that worked and where that buffer line was created. But I think if I could get with Mr. Richards and Trayton, you know, Trayton does a great job, always seems to, in my mind, and from my experience, will work through things and they follow through with their commitment, so I would appreciate that. Let me, let me see if we can't resolve that and get this handled that way, rather than just putting it back in a situation where there's no involvement, if that would.
Mr. Chairman, I wouldn't mind making my motion or accept a substitute motion from Commissioner. I'd like to amend my motion to recommend that we hold this particular other business item for 30 days.
Are you good with that? Any other comments? Call a question, motion carries five zero, good job.
Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Number 35?
Other business item number 35 is consider granting a special exception for backyard chickens as recommended by the Board of Zoning Appeals from the July 15, 2015 variance hearing regarding variance application, V77 USTF. In accordance with the zoning ordinance amendment adopted by the Board of Commissioners on February 26, 2013, and amended on March 11, 2014, Section 13494.4, the Board of Commissioners shall consider granting a special exception for backyard chickens as pets or food source after approval by the Board of Zoning Appeals. The variance analysis is attached for your review, and the Board of Zoning Appeals consider this at their July 15 variance hearing and recommend that it be approved. Attached is the Board of Zoning Appeals' decision. We would ask the Board of Commissioners to consider granting the special exception for the backyard chickens as recommended by the Board of Zoning Appeals for variance case V77 USTF.
Thank you, Commissioner Weatherford.
Make a motion to approve as presented and approved by the Board.
There's a motion, a second, and comments, call a question. Motion carries five zero, sec, includes other business, correct?
Yes, sir.
So let's go back to case Z71.
Res zoning case Z71, Polte Home Corporation, requests rezoning from O&amp;I, R20, and NS to RMA for the purpose of attached residential in landlot 924 and 937 of the 17th District. The property is located on the west side of Terrell Mill Road, across from Brookview Road. The applicant's representative is present. Is there anyone here opposed to rezoning case Z71? Just one. Let the record show there's one person opposed. All those wishing to address the board, please come forward to be sworn in.
Mr. Bailey?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the record this morning, my name is James Bailey, and I'm here on behalf of Polte Homes on Z71, which is an application to go from property currently zoned O&amp;I to an RA6 single-family residential neighborhood. What you see above you here is the general location of the property on Terrell Mill Road. The majority of it is zoned O&amp;I. To the rear of the property is CRC, GC, with O&amp;I being diagonally across Terrell Mill Road, as well as a small portion of neighborhood shopping. That's located within a community activity center. Site plan that you have before you today is for 51 homes. Each home will have a minimum of 2,500 square feet and up, with two-car garages. You'll have four-sided architecture with a mixture of brick and stack stone and other combinations with superior interior finishes and options. We've got sale prices projected for this development in the upper 300,000s and into the 400,000s. And we're not guessing at that number, we have the exact product in findings area with the average sales price of $385,000. We think it will be into the fours here. Staff recommended approval for 52 homes. The final site plan has 51 with a zoning designation of RA6 for the single-family homes. What you see now before you and on the screen is an example of the quality homes, again, in the upper 300,000s and up. The interior finishes you see have been made part of the stipulations and are the various design options that are provided to the homeowner when they're looking at the home and deciding which option they would like to have. These, again, have been included in the stipulation letter, a selection of those, so that it will be certain that these will be quality finishes that end up in the final home. I want to briefly touch, there's various floor plans that are provided in this development. One of them, though, we do like because it provides an option for a master on the main. These are two-story townhomes, and we think that that allows us to market it to varying markets, not just the younger and maybe the retired or any where in between with these various design options. Want to briefly talk about the rear elevations. What you see before you today has been put in the stipulation letter, and is a rear elevation, even though it may look like a front elevation, and this is important because it will be backing up the Terrell Mill Road, those units. We've agreed to do elevations that look like that, with the district commissioner having the final approval on any rear elevations. Want to touch briefly on stipulation letter, I won't go through everything. It's in front of you, it's dated August the 12th is the correct stipulation letter. We have agreed to do a wrought iron style fencing with brick columns along the 1,250 feet of Terrell Mill Road. We're going to have a mandatory HOA that will be responsible for maintaining the screening and the landscaping. Have a ground-based monument-style entrance with input from the Terrell Mill Community Association. The landscape plan to be approved by the district commissioner, the county arborist with input from TMCA. Elevations have been attached and made part of the stipulation letter to show the kind of elevated landscaping that will be provided and other portions of the stipulation that make this project consistent with the Powers Ferry master plan. Other protections are contained within the letter, I won't go through all of them. One of the major points in this development is, after the planning commission, we learned that we were in the direct line for the Water Authority project, and working with Polte and the county, we've agreed to donate specified funds that will allow certain improvements that were requested by staff and others to be done upon the completion of the Water Authority, instead of just donating them into a generalized sidewalk fund, it would guarantee that those are done. I think when you look at the plan, you'll find that this plan is consistent with the Powers Ferry master plan. It's located in an area that's identified for proposed future changes, consistent with Z71. The plan states that there is a desire to move from multifamily residential rental, and of course, Z71 is for sale with the 10% rental limitation. The plan has a desire to create a unique and vibrant pedestrian-friendly village. Z71 does that by funding the installation of sidewalks along the entire 1,250 feet of road frontage. There's also a statement in the plan that there's a desire to improve landscaping, lighting, signage, with underground utilities to add value to the community. We think Z71 does that. Of course, we're going to have all underground utilities, monument-based signage, the intense landscaping along the entire frontage of Terrell Mill Road, underground stormwater utilities, and price points in the upper threes and into the fours. Stormwater improvement, I want to touch on that. This is an issue there, there's been a problem in the area with stormwater runoff. There is currently no detention on the site as it sits, and we believe we're going to improve that. One of the things is, the current zoning would allow for 70% impervious coverage while the RA6 would require 45. We're going to engineer and install underground stormwater detention at a significant cost. It's going to be $400,000 and up to do that. But we're committed to doing that, and the reason it's going to be an additional expense is because stormwater staff is required because of the problems in the area that we engineer it for the next, for the second lowest flood event. Therefore, if we were going to have to do the release at 100, we would have to engineer it at 50 and over detain. Another thing that we're going to do out there to improve the stormwater improvement is the current shopping center does not have an updated conveyance system, therefore it floods and goes over the top of the property. We've agreed that we're going to do that, install a new conveyance system that will help that problem and help the area. While we can't fix all the stormwater problems, we think that investing basically half a million dollars into just the stormwater will be a major improvement. Traffic improvement, now, this was the number-one issue that I heard in many of the meetings I attended and the emails and discussion, and there was an overall request for a traffic light at the intersection of Brookview Road and the entrance to this to this development, they're going to be directly aligned. However, through the engineering and further discussion with Cobb DOT, we found that with the addition of our development, that we're still 350 homes short in Terrell Mill Estates and with our development. Therefore, we don't think it would be likely that one would be installed, and it's not plausible to expect that. That said, we believe that we're going to provide less traffic to the area than did the Shrinor Academy, which this was the site of the previous school with 200 AM and 200 PM cars of residents that did not live in the Terrell Mill area. Therefore, you had a greater influx of traffic conditions. Of course, everyone in our development will live there and have about a 50% reduction in the cars from Shrinor Academy to us. We've agreed to do an updated traffic study during the plan review process to determine what else may need to be evaluated. One of the options we put in the stipulation letter, and we asked that it be an option, that we be allowed to consider whether we have a second exit only to the south that would relieve some of the pressure on the aligned entrances, and that would be determined, and whether that is a feasible solution during plan review. And the last one is a very significant one I want to touch on. Due to the hard work of the Terrell Mill Community Association, the district commissioner, we began to hear that there was an extreme problem with stacking on Brookview Road, people trying to turn left and right, and you could not get around to turn, and that caused a lot of the problem. Polte has agreed to donate $25,000, which will be utilized to construct an additional turn lane on Brookview and replace the landscaping that's currently in existence for Terrell Mill Estates, and that'll be, again, a specified fund and will be in addition to the other funds we talked about. What you see on the overhead is what I'm talking about. You had a problem with cars attempting to turn left and cars wanting to go right. Z71 there is where our entrance would be, and there's Brookview Road, so with the $25,000, which is a little bit above what we estimated the cost to be and was confirmed by Cobb DOT to do that, so we look forward to doing that and hope that it helps one of the major concerns that I heard during the meetings. What you see before you is an example of the stipulation letter addressing the elevated landscaping. Again, it will go down the entire frontage of the road. Turner Mill, the Terrell Mill Community Association will be on the landscape committee, and again, the entire frontage. We've also agreed to do the required 10-foot double stacked of cryptomeria buffer against cobblestone walk to the north with an open area in that adjacent being a 20-foot buffer for the open space. I do want to briefly say, and you don't often hear zone lawyers get up here and say this, but I do want to commend the Terrell Mill Community Association. They're professional, they discussed matters with us, they were informed. They did have a lot of concerns and requests, but they were not unreasonable. And I think that that is how the process should be worked, that you come into a community, work with the organization, and arrive at a product that everybody is at least happy with the majority of those aspects, and I commend them for their time and their hours to put into this project. So again, we're here asking for approval of the RA6 subdivision. The planning commission has recommended five to zero approval, and staff has recommended approval of 51 homes. We would ask that you follow that recommendation, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, before you leave it, Diaz, have your stipulation letter of August 12th incorporates all the recommendations of the planning commission, correct?
There are some that vary, but those are ones that we did discuss with the, with the TMCA and with the district commissioner.
Okay. We'll point that out later. Thank you. Opposition, please.
Good morning, chairmen and commissioners. My name is Sherri George, I'm vice president of the Terrell Mill Community Association. Terrell Mill Community Association has communicated and listened to our community through our Facebook page, our website, and we had a community meeting where Mr. Bailey and Mr. Barrett of Polte Group attended, they gave a presentation and answered all of the neighbors' questions that they had. From that meeting, the most important concern that the neighbors had was the traffic that Z71 will put in addition on the road to Terrell Mill Road. That's already very congested at rush hour times. We're not here to oppose Z71 per se, because we appreciate the for-sale townhome units, not rentals, that they'll be good for our community, and it places one of the many pieces of the Powers Ferry master plan puzzle into place, which we're very excited about. TMCA appreciates the detailed stipulation letter submitted by Mr. Bailey, and it accommodates all of the TMCA's requests, except for a 20-foot landscape buffer for our neighbors' cobblestone walk. It solves the majority of the flooding problems that we have on Terrell Mill Road when it rains a lot. Very bad, so we're excited to get that solved. And as Mr. Bailey said, Brookview Road will be widened to three lanes, which will improve the traffic getting out of Terrell Mill Estates with their $25,000 contribution. What TMZ does oppose to in regard to Z71, which would be created by any developer that developed that property, is the increased danger to our 200-plus neighbors who live in Terrell Mill Estates and Woodruff Plantation, as well as the 100-plus new neighbors that the townhomes will provide. Safety for our neighbors is the most important concern of Terrell Mill Community Association. The entrance to the proposed townhome subdivision is currently aligned with the entrance to Terrell Mill Estates on Brookview Road, creating an intersection where they'll go head-to-head, both trying to turn left out of their subdivisions. Terrell Mill Community Association is confident that the county is also concerned for our neighbors and requests a safe solution be found for the intersection of Brookview Road and Terrell Mill Road if Z71 is approved today. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, I'm Bruce Levitt, vice president of the Terrell Mill Estates Homeowners Association. Like the Terrell Mill Community Association, we are not opposed to Z71. We actually think that the project has a lot of very beneficial things. The traffic in the intersection on the chart, Brookview Road is directly across from the townhomes entrance. There are 200 homes back that are serviced from this one little street, that's the only entry and exit point for Terrell Mill Estates and Woodruff Plantation. This is a view of Brookview at Terrell Mill now. There's two cars represented in this little homemade graphic, I apologize, that's the best I could do. One car, you know, trying to turn left out of there, across lanes. It's really a rush hour issue. The rest of the time is not a significant problem. But the, and there's a car trying to turn in. After, with the introduction of the entrance directly across, you have the same exact situation, you've now doubled, so that your, the eyes of your drivers coming out of Brookview are now have a lot more to worry about. The traffic coming down southbound on Terrell Mill in the morning, it's downhill, it's pretty much a raceway. And it's very difficult to get out of there. So we're very concerned that we have this nose-on situation. The The rush hour risk to both the Brookview drivers, the people coming out of the Terrell Mill townhomes, out of the new townhomes, and the people on Terrell Mill, they all are going to have additional risk associated with this intersection. We understand that the widening, and we appreciate the Pulte contribution of the money to widen Brookview. That will definitely help with having additional right turn lane out, but the most dangerous thing by far is the left-hand terrain situation. We really would like to see, we understand the second exit that is a possibility for this development is kind of up in the air because of the engineering of the stormwater situation. We understand that, but we really, really would like to see everything possibly done to make the second exit happen. That would be a huge solution to this, would minimize the traffic coming out at the most dangerous time, which is that morning rush, and allow the traffic in the development to exit simply on its own at the second exit in the natural direction. So we really hope that every engineering solution is turned, you know, every space is turned over to help make that, make that happen. That's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Any other speakers? Second hearing, now the public hearing is closed. Commissioner Hart?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I apologize to the folks that had to wait for my book to get here. As my fellow commissioners know, I'm very familiar with this whole area since I lived there, and I agree with the speakers that the traffic is probably the single biggest issue in the area. DOT has gone out and done a preliminary signal warrant, which the intersection does not meet that, but I will be, as part of the stipulations, asking DOT, once the project is complete, to go out and do another signal warrant, and also to factor in the managed lanes, because there'll be an exit on Terrell Mill Road, which I think will change a lot of the traffic patterns. Dave Braden, why don't you come on up?
Dave Braden with the Stormwater Management Division.
Okay, for the commissioners, if you look down at the diagram that's on our screens right now, down by the NS portion, that is roughly where the water crosses under Terrell Mill. The pipes are a little bit undersized, and the shopping center, which is to the left of the yellow line, does not have any detention in the back.
It does, but it's old.
Right, and so basically what happens is the water comes down off of Powersbury Road, down the hill in that shopping center, and ends up in the back, and with that really heavy rain and any debris, Terrell Mill Road floods. So, no, I know, Dave, we've talked, and this is not going to solve all the problems, but it's going to make a huge positive impact, is it not?
That's right.
Now, what I'd like your folks to do, I agree with the speakers that this second entrance or second exit, actually not entrance, would be hugely beneficial, so when you are working with the applicant during plan review and looking at the stormwater, let's try to make it so that this exit can be put in place. I realize that there's, you know, it's going to be a little bit of moving stuff around, but let's try to take a look.
We don't want to provide a way for flow to bypass the system, right?
Right, okay. All right, thank you. One of the things to keep in mind with this property, and in all these years that the school has been there, people had a tendency to forget that it's actually zoned O and I, and it is greatly underused in its current zoning category. The R-20 zoning along the Terrell Mill Strip kind of led people to believe that it was more of a residential property than it was. It's actually O and I. Also, as mentioned by Mr. Bailey, the Cobb Maryhead Water Authority project will be coming down this side of the street, so one of the things that I asked Mr. Bailey and talked to staff is that instead of the applicant putting in the sidewalks that they've agreed to and the entrance and all that other things, right about the time that they would be putting those in, the Water Authority would be coming down and taking it out. So, in the interest of trying to not waste resources, what we've worked out with DOT is that I think, and Jane, you might want to come up and just agree with this, that I think everyone's agreed on the cost.
Not your opinion, disagree with her.
No, I'm asking if she agrees, because when I looked at the stip letter, there was a dollar figure in there now. Have you seen that dollar figure?
I've looked at the stip letter. We haven't verified the dollar figure.
Okay.
Because our costs are coming out to be about a million dollars a mile for sidewalk right now. Our prices are.
Okay, so what I want to do, and so I'm going to amend the stipulation a little bit, that, and I'll get to find out from Mr. Bailey where they come up with the $61,000. But basically, for the board's understanding, the understanding will be that the applicant will agree to the sidewalk, the decelane, as requested by DOT, but the money will be put aside with DOT to have it done after the fact when the Water Authority, because there is also the possibility that some of it can be done as part of the Water Authority project and reduce the cost. Because right now, there would be considerable grading that would be required to put the sidewalk in, but when the Water Authority comes through and tears everything up, it's going to be a lot easier. So Jane, when I make the motion, I just need you to get together with the applicant during plan review and agree on the value.
Absolutely.
Okay. And that's all I have. Thanks.
Thank you.
And I just want to acknowledge too that, like two of the speakers, the only real email that I've received about this project, once the discussions with Cobblestone Walk have occurred, was about the traffic. There were some issues with Cobblestone Walk. They are suburban SC zoning category, which on the original application, which was RM8, would require a bigger buffer, but since the board is actually considering an RA6 now, the required buffer is only 10 feet up against a suburban condo, and the reason for that is, is you basically have a similar product. When you had RM8, the code contemplates that RM8 is more similar to apartments, and it so requires a bigger buffer. So if you look in staff comments where they talk about 35 feet versus 10 feet, that's the difference. There is an agreement by Pulte to put 20 feet. There is the area in the northwest corner that is listed as green space, and that's because there's a cell tower in the shopping center on Delk Road, and that area is in the fall zone. So Pulte has agreed to put 20 feet of vegetation for screening purposes up in that area. So with that, I'm ready to make a motion. Make a motion to approve Z-71 to the RA6 category, subject to the following conditions. The letter of agreeable stipulations from Mr. Bailey dated August 12, 2015, with the following changes. Mr. Chairman, these kind of pick up the things you asked about before. Item number one, strike the reference in the footnote to price point, and that is just purely legal, well, I'm sure nod her head that we cannot stipulate price points. So we'll just take that. I mean, I appreciate the applicants telling us what they think they're going to sell for, but we can't have that as a stipulation. On item number seven, revise it to read Terrell Mill Road and the northern property boundary adjacent to Cobblestone Walk, and that just refers to what areas responsibility the HOA has, and that's basically to take care of the common areas. Item number 15, there's a footnote number two on item F, which talks about normally the board will put when the houses have to be boarded up, and the applicant has indicated, which is correct, as you can see in the drawing, there's a large number of buildings on this property. So what I'd like to do is add that, but will be completed no later than 180 days from the final board of commissioner approval, and that's basically when they would have to be taken down. So 30 days to board them up and 180 days to take them down.
From closing or from today?
From today. From approval today.
Which is slightly different.
Well, we'll do it from closing. Yeah, let's change that to from closing, because that makes more sense. Item number 16 and number, item number 18, basically just for clarity, I'm going to add at the end of each one, item 16 and 18, that the final landscape plan is to be approved by the district commissioner. And then.
And the county arborist is in there too, right?
Yeah, the county arborist, but then, and then part of that is, and the reason there's two, is one talks about the landscaping along Terrell Mill, and so, and then all other staff comments, not otherwise in question. And that would be the motion.
I second the motion. Any other comments? Or question? Motion carries five oh. Good work, guys. Number Z-73.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Res zoning case Z-73, QuickTrip Corporation, request rezoning from NRC and R-20 to NRC for purpose of a convenience store with self-service fuel sales in Land Lot 963 of the 16th District. Their property is located at the southeast intersection of Roswell Road and Old Canton Road. The applicant's representative is present. Is there anyone here opposed to rezoning case Z-73? Please keep your hands raised. Seven. Let the record show there are seven people here opposed. All those wishing to address the board, please come forward to be sworn in.
Thank you, Mr. Calhoun.
All right. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I'm Richard Calhoun, I represent QuickTrip Corporation here. I appreciate the opportunity to tell you about our new store that we're going to have at the, at the intersection of Roswell Road and Old Canton. I have with me today John D. Bernardo, Jim Clune, Ben Qualls, and Dan Covell from QuickTrip, who I think can answer any technical questions that I may not be able to answer. What we'd like to do here is to replace a 25-year-old QuickTrip store with a new Generation Three store, and basically the emphasis is on more food and not as much on fuel sales. We'll have the same number of gas pumps that we have now. It'll just be a larger store, and it'll be turned in a 90 degrees to face Old Canton Road. The zoning of the property is NRC and R-20 now. We're asking to have it rezoned to NRC, subject to a stipulation letter that we have filed on August 12. We're buying a 1.3-acre parcel to the south that's zoned residential. The whole site would be zoned NRC, and when the planning commission heard it, we had virtually the same stipulations, and they approved, approved the rezoning five zero. I won't go through all of the details in the stipulation letter. It's six pages long, and it runs on and on and on for lots of minor modifications to the zoning. The, but the high points of that, and these were things that we met with the East Cobb Civic Association and with the folks from Mitzi Forest, and also with the planning commission about some of the major points, they'd like to see the site wrapped with arc, with an R-20 buffer. This is a huge buffer. It's a 75-foot wide buffer on the east side and a 50-foot wide buffer on the, on the south side. It's a total of 1.2 acres. Our whole site is 3.6 if you add in the new, the new house to the, or the one that we're buying to the south. So essentially, we've got a third of the site will be an R-20 zone buffer to serve not only as a, as a buffer to the neighbors, but also as a, as a zoning cutoff point for any further commercial movement in, down the Old Canton corridor. We've added the planning commission's recommendations about planning and landscaping, everything that was dictated. A lot of, lot of the letter follows, it tracks very closely the planning commission's recommendation. We've agreed to no drive-through unless it comes back before the board of commissioners as another business item. We've agreed to restricted construction hours. We've agreed to restricted delivery hours. We've agreed to restricted trash pickup hours and operations. We've agreed to have our landscaping contract include trash pickup when the, when the landscapers come to do the landscaping at the store. We've agreed to post a sign prohibiting cut-through traffic because the property, the way the store will face now, I suppose there's a, there's an opportunity for people to come in from Old Canton, cut through the back of the store, and go out Roswell Road. The Mitzi Forest people asked that we do that, and we said, fine, we'll put that up, and that was one of the, one of the planning commission's requirements. And we've also agreed to pipe the drainage from our detention facility that will be moved to the south through the buffer, and if necessary, into the neighboring lot to the, to the east of us. The neighbor there, Mr. Owens, had, had asked that we do that because he has a, I suppose, a mosquito problem sometimes for the, from the drainage that comes through an open ditch before it enters a head wall close to his property. And in effect, we've made every effort here to reduce the, the effects of the, of the store's presence more than it is today. We've, we've restricted a lot of things. The remaining issues, and I think the East Cobb Civic folks will agree with us on that, are as follows. We, we've requested a right-in, right-out at the existing full access that's closest to Roswell Road. I'll put that up here on the site plan right now. Right now, that's a, that's a full access at the intersection at the driveway closest to Roswell Road and, and Old Canton. We're restricting that. Our request, the DOT has recommended that it be a right-in only. We're requesting that it be right-in, right-out, and we've agreed to construct a concrete median to prohibit as much as we can people coming out of there and trying to turn left onto Old Canton, because that's caused accidents in the past. QuickTrip tries every way that they can, and I think if you look at the site plan on this particular project, you'll see that they've done that, to separate the fuel traffic from the store traffic. It's not good to mix it up. We try to keep the deliveries at the rear and so forth. This right-in, right-out gives us an additional exit point for the fuel canopy customers. We've got the fuel canopy customers on the left, and we've got the store customers on the right. If we're allowed to have that right-out at that location in addition to the right-in, that tends to help us separate the traffic, the fuel traffic, from the food traffic, instead of everybody having to, the people that want to use Old Canton Road having to run back to the south and go out of that one driveway onto, onto Old Canton. Our problem today is really parking. We've only got 30 spaces. The new store proposes 53. What that additional exit onto Old Canton Road does, it just, it helps us with the internal traffic, and we think it's going to help with the, with the external traffic on Old Canton, as well as Roswell Road. We will work, of course, with the DOT in any design that they choose to, choose to have on that right-in, right-out, but that's, that's really important to us. A corollary to that is a recommendation for a left-turn lane. We don't necessarily agree that that's a good idea, obviously, if the DOT recommends it and y'all, and y'all require it, then it'll be done, but we, we don't, we think that's probably going to cause some stacking problems with traffic on Old Canton. We don't, we don't think that that's necessary or desirable, but again, that, that's up to you. The landscaping plan is verbatim, in fact, it's actually a little bit more than what the planning commission recommended. We've made that subject to the county arborist and to the district commissioner's approval. The East Cobb Civic Association would like to appoint a landscape committee. I think if you look at that landscape plan, it's, it's pretty, it's pretty complete, and certainly if there are any other additions that need to be made or changes, that's something that the county arborist or the county district commissioner can do, we think, just as well, perhaps better than a landscape committee. The trash pickup, we've agreed to hours and conditions for that. I think that the, the East Cobb Civic Association wanted us to stipulate weekly trash pickup in the wintertime. We're not necessarily going to have the landscapers there every week, so we would like to that just to coincide with when they are there. I have, there was one other issue that the East Cobb Civic Association brought up, and I think the neighbors also, with reference to audio and visual speakers and touchscreen and things like that at the, at the gas pumps. We're only going to use those for customer assistance, for handicap customers, for fuel and food, or for regular customer assistance for fuel only. If somebody has a problem with a pump or it doesn't come on, or there's a handicap person that pulls up there and needs fuel and needs something from the store, that's the only, only purpose that we're going to use those, those speakers for, but we have to have them for those purposes. With that, I think we have. With that, I think we have everything covered that's in our August twelfth stip letter. I've got a revised version that covers all of that with the exception of the option that we requested on the six cryptomerias next to the wall between the existing brick wall and the back of the store. We looked at that. We wanted to put Lelands there. The, I think Commissioner Oat's suggestion was cryptomerias. We're fine with that. We would go with either one, but with that exception, the stip letter of August twelfth, I think, contains everything.
Thank you. We'll hear from my opposition.
I'll just start while I set it up. So, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, thank you so much. My name is Vince Owens, and the aforementioned Vince Owens. We have a property that abuts the easement behind the QuickTrip. And it's not our intention to stop QuickTrip from doing, making the changes that they want to make. And in fact, we appreciate some of the stipulations that they've made for us, but there are some concerns that we still have. And the first concern that I have is, and I understand there is, I just found out something about this yesterday, that the wall for the original agreement said it was supposed to be an eight-foot wall. And I guess that Cobb enforcement went out and said, checked and said it was eight-foot. But if you can see the picture up here, the front part of the wall is clearly not even, I mean, I'm a little over six feet tall, so it's five-and-a-half feet tall. My guess is, and I don't know, I don't know the laws as far as this goes, but I would imagine that the eight-foot was meant for the side that is standing up, not if it drops down, if it's below grade. I figure it's supposed to be on grade eight feet, because the way it stands now, that's not blocking, people throw trash over that, and I'll get to that. People throw trash, we get noise, we get everything over that wall because it is so small. An eight-foot wall would solve that problem, but it's not an eight-foot wall. On the side of QuickTrip, it's a five-and-a-half-foot wall, which doesn't prevent a lot of the issues that I think the wall was intended to prevent. The additional noise, which was the next, I'm sorry. So the other concern we have is additional noise, and with the trucks, and they made some stipulations, they have made some new stipulations as far as the time to drop off that they can have trucks come through. But one stipulation is if it's their proprietary trucks, they can do it anytime. So that's still going to come through in the middle of the night. And the non-proprietary trucks is whenever possible. So they have the stipulation between 6:00 AM and 6:00 PM, whenever possible, but, I mean, that still leaves it wide open for middle of the night. The stipulation that the idling delivery vehicles will be discouraged by posting a sign, you know, posting a sign, I don't know how much that's going to do. If you see a sign that's supposed to say, "Please no idling," I don't think that's going to stop anybody from idling their trucks. The stipulation, the dumpster equipped with a rubber lid, which is great, if somebody's out there, an individual's out there opening the lid and closing it, that will prevent some noise. But when the trash is being picked up in the middle of the night, and the dumpster's being picked up and dropped, that makes a loud banging noise. And even with the stipulation, they did stipulate between 7:00 AM and 7:00 PM. Our concern is if it does continue to happen in the middle of the night, we're going to have to come back here or go somewhere else, and it's going to be on us to bring this to attention. It's going to keep going back and forth. You know, so my proposal is the height of the wall, again, the height of the wall, it's a permanent solution. It's not, we have to rely on somebody, trucks not idling, they're sitting there with their trucks idling. It doesn't rely on them making deliveries at certain hours, picking up trash at a certain hour. The wall is there permanently. If it's there, it'll take care of all those issues. We don't have to keep coming back to this. The second one is speakers, and I understand that that has been stipulated, that it's only for the, if somebody can't go inside. So I'm fine with that, the second stipulation. It seems that the food ordering is only for individuals who are handicapped and can't go inside, so I'm okay with that. The second one is the visual impact, and this is a picture from my son's bedroom window. So that's seen QuickTrip, and this is in the middle of summer. So these are when the trees are fully leafed out. In the winter, that's all gone, because the pine trees have now grown to forty-plus feet tall, so the pines are not providing any kind of light blockage. So we're getting nothing from the trees, and even if they plant new trees, and they did plant trees along the fence line as they're supposed to, those trees have grown above the fence or above the wall. It's not providing any kind of blockage at all. And I guess there's some talk about putting trees in the easement area. The tree canopy is so high and so dense, I don't know what's going to grow in there that's going to be thick enough to actually block any of that light. So again, and you'll see this as a pattern here, increase the height of the wall, that's one of my proposed solutions, and enhance landscaping, which I understand they're still working on. That's still in the planning stages. Next one, increase trash, and this is just pictures, it's hard to see here, but trash, and this is directly on the other side of the wall. Because the wall is only five-and-a-half feet on the one side, people just walk over, drop trash over the side of the wall, and it ends up on that side of the wall. They said they're going to have regularly scheduled, and, you know, I don't know what the regular schedule's going to be, if that's defined, that'd be great. But then, again, the same thing, is if they don't provide, if it's not picked up on a regular basis, then it's back on us to bring this up, and, you know, we have to go through this process. Again, if you raise the height of the wall, it's a permanent solution to that. The enclosed drain, and they discuss it, just one correction is, I appreciate closed drain, that was not my idea, they came to me with that, which I'm great, I think that's a great idea, but I didn't request that, that was just, they brought it to me. And I don't know what the, I would just like to see what the enclosed drain is, whether it's going to be metal or concrete, and if it's above ground, I'd prefer it just to keep it like it is now, because it looks like a stream now. If it's above ground, that's just going to be an eyesore, so. The, I guess the final is the, what we're really looking for here, sorry, that's, that was the letter, I think you all have the original agreement. Do you have a copy of the original agreement that had the eight-foot wall? So really, I mean, the things that I'm looking for, I think the wall, just increasing the height of the wall to at least what I believe was the intention, the original intention, to eight feet on the side of QuickTrip, on grade, rather than on the other side, because that, some of them, it goes down four feet on the other side, but it's not providing anything for us on the other side. So that, the increased tree planting around there, and I think some of the other things have been stipulated too, so I appreciate that. But thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir.
Oh, and I'm sorry, one more thing.
Yes, sir.
If you have any questions, feel free to call me back up after this.
Sure.
Just, because I think some questions sometimes are asked of the other party that are better answered by the homeowners.
Well, thank you for that advice. Next speaker, please.
Chairman, Commissioners, my name is Greg Legay. I'm the president of the Walton Glen Homeowner Association. I live at thirty-fifty-five Brown Point Place. That's the first street that is south of Old Canton, from the QuickTrip. That's the photo there. That's the view of the south buffer as it sits today, fully mature hardwood buffer of the pines. It's about where the proposed additional turn with the left-in, left-out, is to be about two-hundred-and-forty feet from Brown Point Place. As it is today, with the current configuration, and where the commercial and the residential separates, we already have people that come in, they turn into our street, into Brown Point Place, they'll come in, they'll U-turn, they'll come in, they'll come into the first neighbor's house, pull in, back out. I mean, and that's with, that's a thirty parking spaces. So doubling the number of parking, double the amount of traffic, obviously will make it worse than it is now. So we're opposed to that, that commercial traffic coming that much further to the residential area of that second drive. So that covers the, that second turn. Also with the buffer, oops. Also with the buffer as it is today, I mean, it's fully mature buffer, you saw from the picture how, the landscape plan we were shown has one-inch caliper pines, single row, a double row of deciduous trees, and on a four-foot berm. I mean, none of that comes close to anything I'll ever see in my lifetime that would be the berry that we have, the visual that you saw from Brown Point Place. That's it, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Do your best, Jill.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Jill Flem, and I'm the case manager for East Cobb Civic Association on Z seventy-three. After almost a month of talking with the applicant, we still feel there are some items that have not been fully addressed in the current stipulation letter. First, we support DOT recommendations, and we feel they should be asked to comply with them. Second, the screening buffers and landscaping all around the perimeter of the property. Only a single row of the same type of currently installed pine tree is being proposed for the new eastern border. As demonstrated in the current buffer, these trees grow very tall with few lower branches and do not provide a good visual or sound screen against QT. We recommend that QT use a staggered row of a different type of evergreen such as Jolly Green Thujas that maintain branches from the base to the top of the tree. We also recommend these trees for the berm and along the southern end of the property. While we appreciate the addition of evergreens to fill in the gaps of the current buffer, we would recommend a long-lasting evergreen that does not lose the lower branches in the shade or die in twenty years. There are also currently no shrubs indicated on the landscape plan for screening around the detention pond. All the shrubs listed are to be located in the islands next to the QuickTrip building. We recommend that these be added to the plan. In addition, there's a modular wall, if it can be seen from Old Canton. We recommend that the materials are specified in the landscape plan. We would also recommend that the last sentence of stipulation five, paragraph three, be changed to read, "Size and matching style of security gate." And finally, yes, we do recommend that a landscape committee be formed for the purpose of finalizing the landscape plan with one member from Mitzi Forest, QT, and Community Development, with input by the county arborist and final approval by the district commissioner. Finally, we recommend that the last sentence of stipulation thirteen be changed to read, "Weekly removal of trash and litter from the buffer areas." Given the high volume of traffic that exists at this station now, the current problem and the fact that they are proposing to build even a larger convenience store, I think we recommend that there be a definite timeframe that trash removal will occur. We cannot recommend approval of this application as presented by the applicant at this time. A landscape plan without adequate long-term buffering for the neighbors is an integral part of making the expansion of the NAC into a residential area work. We recommend that either this application be held until the landscape plan can be added to, or that a landscape committee be formed, and also recommend the additions to the stipulation letter. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Richard, you have two minutes if you'd like to comment.
I've got one housekeeping measure. I do have an updated stip letter here for the eighteenth that incorporates the new plan, that incorporates the six cryptomerias and things of that nature that we've discussed here today. The only thing that was different about it was the, well, it was, that was it, the six cryptomerias. We had an option in there to do the Lelands because we thought they might do better, but at any rate, we're fine with the cryptomerias. That's the plan that we've been looking at today, our landscape plan and our site plan. I've got it attached here, and I've got a revised letter, so I'd like to submit that to the record.
Do they have it?
Mr. Chairman, I don't want to take a letter today.
Okay.
We're not going to take a letter today. None of us have had a chance to read it.
That's fine. It's, the changes we've made.
That's fine. It should have been given before today.
Thank you. All the carrying is closed, Commissioner Oat.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You can just stay up there, Mr. Calhoun.
All right.
Got a couple of questions for you. On, I guess, and for the fellow commissioners, it's just listed as, I can't give you a page, but it is listed as an addendum to summary of intent for rezoning. Basically, it's after the page for staff recommendations. On there, it says, "Part Two," and it says, "List all requested variances or changes to zoning conditions." All right? And item number three, and item number five, okay? So in item number three, it says, "To the extent necessary, relief from Z six nineteen-ninety low-profile signage requirement, and from Cobb County sign height limit to allow one uniform QuickTrip ground-based monument sign fourteen feet in height on each of the road frontages." Okay? So just hold on to that because there's a whole lot of inconsistencies on talking about these signs. And number five, it says, "Increase allowable signage outside building setback lines from one-hundred-and-twenty square feet to one-hundred-and-sixty square feet to permit fuel canopy logo signage." All right? So, and then on, in your stip letter, the one that I'm working from, number fifteen, you say that it's going to have a brick base, yet on the depictions that are submitted with the application, and for the commissioners, I think it's, I'll find what exhibit it is there. You have a depiction, it's, it doesn't have an exhibit number, but if you go about three more pages from the one I just had you on, it shows a sign, and it says that it's going to be a black base. Okay? So tell me what exactly QuickTrip wants for signs.
What they want for signs, and what we've agreed, what we agreed to with the Mitzi Forest folks, we met with them on the twenty-first, was the sign that we put up will be no higher than the sign that's there today. That's the first thing, it covers the height.
Okay, so is that?
Yes, and the brick base, we agreed to do that.
Okay, so.
That will supersede anything else.
The sign height that's there today?
Correct.
Okay. So item number three, where you say, "List all requested variances," and you say, "Relief from low-profile signage," then you're not asking for any relief, you're keeping what you have.
Correct. The reason we asked for that was in a previous zoning condition, it had said, "Low-profile signage," and there was no definition of what low-profile signage really meant. So just to avoid any ambiguity, we thought, okay, fine, we want relief from that, but we will stipulate to the height, and that's what we agreed to the neighbors, we would have the signs the same height as they are now, and I believe that they're actually less than fourteen feet.
Okay.
And the signage outside the setback lines, normally, the canopy is outside the building setback line on a lot of these sites, and we have the little QT logos that are on the canopy. That would have put us over the limit, but on the site plan that we have for this site, the fuel canopy is actually inside the building setback line, so we don't need that size variance.
All right, so for the clerk, I'm going to strike out, I'm not going to put it in a stipulation letter because the applicant's telling us they don't need it. So in their application, when it says, "Part Two, Number Five," we'll strike that. John, do you want me to put that as a stipulation? Okay, all right, I'll add it. Okay. In your, on item number two in the letter that the board has, which is August twelve, number two says, "The subject property shall be zoned from its existing NRC and R twenty zoning district classification to the NRC zoning district classification, subject to the attached preliminary site plan entitled QuickTrip number seven forty-nine S, version zero zero one." In parentheses, "The site plan," then with a footnote, number one, and it says, "Except for left-turn lane and southernmost driveway."
And that, again, was just, we didn't think that was, we didn't think that was a good idea, but obviously, if the board does, then that's what'll happen.
All right. And I'm assuming that it means the same thing in item number four?
Correct.
All right.
And again, that's really addressed to the right-in, right-out that we would, we think we really need, but the left, and the left turn is, it goes with it, we just didn't think it was a good idea.
All right, and this came up as a question from Mr. Owens. Item number six, on page three of the stipulation letter, this talks about the easements relative to the discharge pipe. So let's go into a little bit more, better explanation as to what exactly number six says.
Certainly. We understood that Mr. Owens and I, I mean, I went out there with him the night that we met with the Mitzi Forest folks. we met with the Mitzi Forest folks, that he wanted that open channel piped. I understand that he doesn't want an aerial, an aerial pipe there, but that's what I understood his request to be, and I asked him where the property line was, we were walking around the back of his fence and looking up at the view that he showed on the monitor there, and he said, "Well, his property line is basically the fence, which is right here, and the head wall to the open channel was to the right of us." I believe it's on the QuickTrip property, I don't think we need an easement from Mr. Owens, but if we do, or from anybody else in that area, we would have to have that easement in order to extend the pipe. I believe that the head wall is on, is within that 75-foot buffer which is located on the QuickTrip property, but that's just in case it's not, and in case maybe the property line, the Owens' property line encompasses the head wall, if that's the case, then we would need an easement from Mr. Owens to connect that pipe to the existing drainage pipe that comes out of the detention area.
All right, so if the final plan that you would have to present to Mr. Owens was not agreeable to him, then he would just say, "No, he doesn't want to grant you the easement."
Correct.
All right, and I think that...
And then we're relieved from that requirement.
And I think that would make it a little bit, I know, you guys are going to roll your eyes, but I think what was confusing is it says "Subject to written approval by Cobb County and to the grant to applicant," I think that, that first two, so basically you're saying "and the grant to the applicant of any necessary easements."
Right, right, we want county approval to pipe the ditch, and also if we need an easement from Mr. Owens or whoever else is adjoining the property, if it turns out that we need that to get on their property connected, that's, that would be a requirement.
All right. Now, you said something that when we, when we met and talked about this the other day, it was very contrary to what you told me the other day. You stated earlier in your presentation that the main reason that QuickTrip wants the right in and right out, you talked about separating the fuel, fueling traffic from the food traffic or the store traffic, and that you wanted the fueling traffic to have the ability to access Old Canton Road. Now, I made it very clear when we talked the other day, and I think if I have Jane come up, DOT's going to make it very clear that the county is not interested in granting access to any other part of Old Canton Road except to turn right on Upper Roswell. There are two right-hand turn lanes there, and part of the whole issue on this site is the fact that people are trying to either go straight on Old Canton or to try to go left on Roswell Road, and if that's the whole reason that you need the right out, then I'm, I'm not going there.
No, I mean, the idea is to provide an additional exit point on the, I mean, again, it helps with internal...
But that's not what you said, and so that's why I want to clarify, because what you said was you wanted folks to be able to use Old Canton Road, so are you telling me that...
Well, to be able to get out, you know, to turn right on the Old Canton, I mean, we're not talking about going left.
Okay, I just wanted, I wanted to clarify because...
Not a left, we, no, we absolutely don't want anybody going left, and that's why we've asked...
Well, not even just left, but just trying to get into the straight-ahead lanes.
Right, right.
Because that's, I mean, you know, Jane's nodding her head, and I'll have her come up and talk to you in a minute, but that's one of the major issues there. Let me see if I have any more questions for you. That's all I have for you, thank you, Jane.
Thank you, Richard.
Hello, I'm Jane Strickland, the Cobb DOT.
All right, so let's talk about DOT's concerns and recommendations here, I know that when we've talked, one of the big issues is indeed this northern entrance.
Yes, sir.
So you want to talk about what DOT would be looking for? I know in many places where we put a pork chop, as it's commonly referred to, it doesn't work. So what would DOT be recommending if, I know that you want the right-in only, is there any solution that you can think of that would truly make it a right-in, right-out without cars having the ability to get onto the straight-ahead or the left-hand turn lanes on Old Canton? Or is that part of the reason why you only want the right-in?
We really only want the right-in, this is, the existing driveway now is one that we've been tracking from a crash perspective, normally we track intersections, but this driveway in particular is one that we've had a major problem with.
Okay.
So that's just really the reason why, is we really would like it to just be the right-in only, so that it wouldn't be, even if you built the pork chop very severely, where you could only make a right and only make a right out, you could still have that person that tries to make that left, so we're really trying to prohibit that, or tries to make the left in.
Right, okay. And now, you just kind of led right into the next part.
Okay.
I know DOT is recommending a left-hand turn in, on the southern entrance, you know, and the applicant disagrees, so let's talk about that one.
Okay. Currently, there is one southbound lane on Old Canton Road, if a vehicle wants to turn left into QT, they're going to block the through lane, we'd like to get them off the travel lane so that, to prevent rear-end collisions. I've been working with the QT engineer, and he's given me a plan that shows that the left turn lane can be built, and it won't...
Okay, so there is, right away, there is an area that Old Canton can be aligned to do that?
Yes, and it won't take away storage from the left turning for Roswell Road.
Okay, all right, that's all I have, thanks.
All right, thank you.
Okay, some of the other stuff that we heard, Commissioners, is the brick wall. Unfortunately, I believe in 1990, when this was first approved, that the brick wall and the landscaping all was the eight feet, and as Mr. Owens showed, it does indeed meet the requirements. I asked code enforcement to go out and measure the wall, and they measured the wall every 20 feet, and it is indeed eight feet by the way code is measured. Unfortunately, it does not accomplish what the residents, I think, were looking for, and also unfortunately, because of the way the wall is built, you can't really add on top of the wall. If you were to make it to eight feet, like Mr. Owens said, I think the photograph he showed us, you would be only at about two and a half feet, if you wanted to get it eight feet the way it would be measured, which is part of the reason why I talked to the applicant about the row of cryptomeria along the back of the store, to try to provide both a visual and a sound barrier. The speed bumps, I agree with the folks in the community that, you know, that if possible or feasible, I think that they need to be put in there, and I don't really see a reason why they wouldn't be feasible, I think that they can be integrated in with the deliveries for the trucks. The issue about the idling, and I think code enforcement folks would agree, that would be very difficult to enforce. And kind of addressing the opposition's concerns about the visual screening, what QuickTrip has said is that the canopy lights are recessed, and with the rotating the store around, you're, some of the lighting that you're now seeing, which is in the front of the store, because that's where the folks are coming and going, now will actually be facing Old Canton Road and not Roswell Road. And so the only lighting that's going to be on the back of the store would be security lighting, and that lighting faces down, it doesn't face out, so with the combination of that and the row of cryptomeria at the store level, I believe that that's going to help with the noise concerns and the lighting concerns that you're currently having, because a lot of the source of the light is going to be directed away from you. I agree with the trash concerns, but one thing I would point out, that with the store rotating, once again, the traffic pattern of the pedestrians back and forth is no longer going to be up against that wall, they're going to be up along Old Canton Road, but I do plan on putting some time in there for the trash pickup. We talked about the enclosed drain and the discussion both by East Cobb Civic Association and the folks at Mitzi Forest about the landscaping, I do plan on having in there that even with the landscape committee, the final approval will be mine, which will help ensure that we take care of making it so that the detention pond is buffered and then the rest of the store. So, Mr. Chairman, those are my comments, make a motion, make a motion to approve Z-73 to both the NRC and the R-20 category, and the reason for that is the buffers are going to be R-20, subject to the following. The letter of agreeable stipulations for Mr. Richard Calhoun dated August 12, 2015, with the following changes. Number one, add to Item Number Two that all buffers, including the 75-foot on the eastern side and the 50-foot on the southern side, will be zoned R-20. And the reason for that is that provides the stop for going south on Old Canton for any future commercial development. Number two, Item Number Five, strike the reference to Leland Cypress in the second paragraph on Line Six, and Mr. Calhoun mentioned that. On Item Number Five, add to the end that all landscaping plans should be approved by the district commissioner. The next one is on Item Number Seven, strike where it says "The applicant, however," which is in Line Three, and the remainder of that sentence. Item Number Eight, revise to read, and this is completely revise it, that a minimum of two speed bumps shall be installed in the rear of the store to be constructed on the subject property. Item Number Twelve, strike from Lines Three and Four where it says "Unless the hours are changed at all the QuickTrip kitchens in Metro Atlanta." I don't want it to automatically switch the hours. The next one is, strike the second paragraph, and that's in the same, Item Number Twelve, and replace it with "No drive-through facility is being requested at this time, but should one be desired in the future, a request for same must come back before the Board of Commissioners as another business item for their consideration." And that's basically what the applicant agreed for, it's just the wording that comes from the Planning Commission. The next change would be Item Number Thirteen, strike from there on Line Three where it says "Whenever possible," and that deals with deliveries. It does not restrict the proprietary deliveries that QuickTrip said they need for their kitchen and some other things, but what it does is it regulates the non-proprietary deliveries. The next one, also in Item Thirteen, change the last sentence to read "The landscaping contract, a provision requiring weekly scheduled removal of trash and litter from the buffer area." I believe that it's not going to be as big a problem as I talked earlier, but I believe that since QuickTrip is indeed asking to expand the store, and through their testimony, that is to increase the food side, not the fuel side, the issue that we have with trash is from the fuel, or the food side. So if we're going to increase that, then we need to police it better than it's been done in the past. And that would, that would change to requiring weekly scheduled removal of trash and litter from the buffer area. The next one would be, add in Item Number Twenty, and this is from the Planning Commission, "Applicant will install signage that clearly states 'Cut-through traffic is not allowed,' sign to be placed at the second entrance on Old Canton Road, which is the southern entrance. Water and Sewer Division comments and recommendations, Stormwater Management Division comments and recommendations, Cobb DOT comments and recommendations, and then the owner developer to enter into the development agreement pursuant to OCGA 367113 for dedication of system improvements and mitigation of traffic concerns." And then the final addition is that there will be a landscape committee consisting of one member from Mitzi Forest, the county arborist, and one member from Community Development designated by the director, with, as we said, all the landscape plans to be approved by the district commissioner. And that is my motion.
There is second to that motion.
I'm second.
Second by Commissioner Burrow. Any other comments or questions? Call a question, motion carries 5-0. I believe that concludes our day, John.
Mr. Chairman, that completes your printed agenda, there is one other thing, though. Today is Mr. Hosak's last zoning hearing ever as a county employee.
Who?
Mr. Hosak.
Mr. Hosak, Mr. Hosak, stand up. Thank you for bringing that to our attention, Mr. Hosak has been with us for about 40 years, and he's done an extraordinary job of leading the Community Development Agency, and he will be missed. Congratulations and good luck in your new adventures, sir. Without any further comment, we are adjourned.